This January 25, 2012, City Commission Meeting will come to order. Madam City Manager.
Will you please stand and join me in the invocation? Gracious Father of mercy and comfort, we thank you for the opportunity to come before you as leaders of this great community and as representatives of the extended families of all who serve the city of Tallahassee. We ask your blessings specifically this evening on behalf of our city family members Wade McKenzie and Pat Brown, who both recently suffered injuries while carrying out their responsibilities. Father, we ask that you nourish their bodies and spirit during their time of recovery, support their families. We thank all city staff who demonstrated benevolence in their contributions to their families during this time of need. Continue to bless them with a speedy recovery. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the flag which stands: One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any agenda modifications?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. We do have a couple of agenda mods this evening. Number one, we've added an item, Point 1, to the consent agenda. That is the confirmation of the appointment of Jim Cook as the City Treasurer Clerk. And that was added by you, Mr. Mayor. Item 10.1, we have an update on the Brogan Museum funding. You asked Commissioner Ziffer to come back with some information on that, and he has some information for you this evening. And that is item number 10.1. Also, item number 23, which is a public hearing on a resolution initiating the special assessment process for West End Village PUD and approval of caveat. We actually added this. It was already a public hearing and properly noticed, but somehow we missed getting it on the agenda. So we've added that as item number 23. And that is all that I have.
Okay. Appearances? We don't have that. Citizens' input on agenda items. Do we have speakers?
Mayor, we have at least one.
Okay.
And I'm gonna make that two.
All right.
The first will be Dr. Erwin Jackson. He'll be followed by Curtis Baines.
Thank you very much.
Erwin Jackson, 1341 Jackson Bluff. We've made serious progress regarding the questions raised over reimbursement of attorney fees. I appreciate that. There's still two very serious problems. I've emailed you what my problems are. I want to state them publicly. The definition says you will pay legal fees if a individual successfully defends or prevails. Now, by the definition of that is without a finding of a code violation. The problem with that is a individual can go through the process, and near the end, he can simply resign. They will have probable cause findings against him, and if that commissioner resigns, then he's no longer under the jurisdiction, so it will be impossible for the Ethics Commission to take any action. So we need to change the definition, which says not only -- it shouldn't read "only" without a finding of code violation, but we should include "without probable cause." You can be found with probable cause and then simply resign and walk away, and the city gets stuck with legal fees. That's unacceptable. Secondly, I would ask that you put a cap on the dollar amount. I've hired a lot of attorneys for $175 an hour, and it's hard to tell this community that you can't live if you're getting paid very well on $175 an hour. The 103.8, a problem there is if you prepay a person's legal fees, and then they turn around and say, "We'll pay you back later." There's no language in there that says what legal steps will be taken by this commission to recoup those monies for the citizens. And then finally, 103.09 has to be eliminated in total. All that is, is intimidation to try to prevent people from coming forth and raising questions about the mayor or the commissioner's activities. In any case, the Florida Ethics Commission, if you read closely, 112, 31, 7, parenthesis 7, it clearly states that the Ethics Commission has the authority to make that determination if, in fact, there's malicious intent. This body has no authority to make a decision that has been given to the state. So you'd be overstepping your bounds, and that would be unacceptable as well. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your help on these three items.
Next speaker.
Next speaker is Curtis Baines, also speaking on item 14.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, Curtis Baines, 1323 East Tennessee Street. I would just want to mention just a couple of other things in association with number 103. I think it's the section on the amendment. There's still a provision in there that allows the city attorney to amend your policy. I hope it's narrow enough to make it clear that all the attorney's really gonna be doing is just updating any changes in statutes that might apply to it, not actually amending it, amending the policy. The other thing is on the new policy, number 102, that deals with the criminal cases, just a clerical issue. You need to go back and renumber all the sections so that it's consistent with the policy, 102, instead of 103. And the other thing that I had -- I was curious about it. It talks about when there's not a finding of guilt, and I was just curious as to how that might apply with -- if that's just a continuation in the event of a mistrial or hung jury or something like that. I mean, it doesn't terminate the injunction because there wasn't a finding of guilt. A matter's not resolved until the case is either dismissed or there's an acquittal, I believe, or a finding of guilt. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think I see what he's talking about, because if you look on page 2, the numbering says Proposed Commission Policy 102. Is it supposed to be 102 or 103?
It's supposed to be 102.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
There are no other speakers for this portion of the meeting.
All right. We on consent?
Move consent, Mayor.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. There's a motion in second on consent, on in favor of the motion, say aye. It passes unanimously. Next item.
The next item, Mr. Mayor, is the item on 10.1, that Commissioner Ziffer is going to update us on the Brogan Museum funding.
Do we have any materials, or is this just?
Should be in your book. Isn't it?
It was with the mod that went out.
I don't know if they put it in. Okay, go right ahead.
It's not terribly long. I'll go through it.
Yeah.
Commissioner, I believe the commission requested that they receive material on how the funds are actually being used. And on 10.1, the total funds released by the city were $62,980. The following is where the funds up to this point have been used and those that are still being used for the future. Liability insurance for the Freedom Riders exhibits, $550. Titanic exhibit cost of goods sold, photo concession, retail sales costs were $5,342. Outbound expense for shipping, $6,683. Licensing fees, $10,802. Local label for outbound Titanic, $3,182. Forklift cost, $944. Some truck rentals, $285. Coming out of the closet, return freight was $4,395. Total expenses, adding those up, $32,183, leaving a balance of less than 50%, of which was allocated of $30,797. And those funds will be used towards the contractual services that we outlined for not employees, but hiring some of the employees back to assist with finance, program management of the camp, which we'll be doing, art liquidation, and then the reinvention projects. And those are where the monies are being used.
I think that's a thorough report. Anybody got any questions, comments? Is this something we have to approve?
You already approved it.
I thought so.
You just asked for an update from Commissioner Ziffer.
Great, thank you for the update. Next item. 10.
That was 10. We are on item 11. Item number 11, which is a discussion of property donation to Rainbow Rehab Incorporated. And Commissioners, the city owns property at 1433 Connecticut Street that it received from the U.S. Department of Justice. It's partially rehabilitated, but it can't be occupied as it currently exists, and it's causing blight on the neighborhood. We're recommending that this property be donated to Rainbow Rehab. Rainbow Rehab has done a lot of work in the community on their own, and they've done it in partnership with us in the past. They've always done a very, very good job of rehabilitation projects. This would be a $25,000 loan to be used to assist in $50,000 worth of rehabilitation. And I believe Michael -- Tom Lewis is here to answer any questions you might have.
Question?
On this item. I think normally Michael Parker would probably do this item, but tonight is Tom Lewis's last City Commission meeting, so he decided he'd get up in front of you one more time. He is retiring at the end of this month.
I've never been in the habit of ever correcting the manager. But on this one, this is a Mark Bedoin-Tom Lewis deal.
Oh, all right, good.
And the federal government contacted Mark Bedoin and advised him that they had, through seizure, taken a property, and would we take it from them. And we agreed to do that. I went up and looked at the property. It's a small piece of property wedged between two magnificent ranch-style townhouses on Connecticut Street that back up on Raleigh Park. So our ability to bring this piece back to life will do a lot for that street and a lot for that neighborhood. And we think that Rainbow Rehab does a tremendous job. They've done great things with the 10 previous houses we've worked with them on. We would recommend that you -- we give this to them, and they will fix it up. They have a grant from Presbyterian Church to match what we're doing. And they currently have a house that they have a lease to purchase arrangement on, and as soon as the individual clears the bank, they'll sell him that. And that's how they roll their money over to do additional deals. So we would recommend this one.
Approval.
I move the item, Mayor.
Second.
Property moved in second.
I just wanted to give a shout-out to my church, Faith Presbyterian. I was very happy to see their name on this agenda item, that they have stepped up with $30,000 to contribute to this project, and I just really wanted to say how proud I was to remember that church.
Well, and before we vote, we -- well, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. It passes unanimously. And go ahead.
Well, since this is Mr. Lewis's last meeting, we can't let this go without a little testimonial or roast or something. But I just wanted to say, and I think I said this when I first got here, that, you know, my experience with other communities and the person that's in Tom's position and those other communities is often those people you had to kind of kick them to get something going. Tom, you had to -- it's like holding a horse back.
Absolutely.
Yeah, he was, you know, he was going. So I really enjoyed working with Tom, and I think he's done a wonderful job, and we'll miss you. Good luck.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
I'll just say this. Tom, we -- he had a little dinner the other night with some of the staff folks, and I stopped by there. And just to congratulate him and wish him well on his retirement. And then I remembered how long I've known Tom, since 1976. We have been friends or known each other since that period of time when he came here and I came back from the United States Air Force after four years of service and came back to Tallahassee to begin things. And we got to know each other then.
You're telling your age, both of you.
I went in the Air Force when I was like 16, so no.
High school, high school?
Yeah, I was in high school at the time, but -- and so I knew Tom then, and he was a person of ideas then. He was working at FAMU, I think. Or was it FAMU?
No, I was the chief of the Bureau of Housing for the state of Florida then, working for Governor Askew.
Uh-huh.
And then for then, I went over to be the Assistant Dean for the School of Business, working for Dr. Mobley.
Mm-hmm.
And then I went to Atlanta and worked for President Carter as the regional representative for the Secretary for the Department of Transportation. And then I went into Detroit to get a PhD in urban development, working for Coleman Young. Never went to any school.
Yeah.
But working for Mayor Coleman Young. You got a
Education.
A degree in strong mayor politics and a whole bunch of other things. It was just a fantastic experience. And then I was asked by Dr. Mobley to come back and be the professor of entrepreneurship at FAMU. And I had a pleasure of meeting Mrs. Favors one day, and we talked, and she heard about an interview for Assistant City Manager job that I didn't get, but she put me on her radar. And then I was most fortunate for her to let me have the opportunity to do what I do. That's the story.
That's a great story. But it almost looked like you couldn't find a hole to job, Tom.
Every last one of them, the paycheck increased.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for your service to the city of Tallahassee. Oh, boy. Gonna miss him. Next.
Next item is item number 12, discussion of proposed sale of city property on Gaines Street, the Sally property. And Commissioners, this item is recommending sale of the city property located on Gaines Street called the Sally property in the amount of $3.6 million. The purchaser plans to build a mixed-use development with approximately 150 residential units and 20,000 square feet of retail space. I think most commissioners will recall that we purchased this property a number of years ago with the idea, of course, of reselling it and with the idea of marketing it as something that would be beneficial to what we're trying to do on Gaines Street. And obviously, we think that this project is going to be consistent with that. Mark Bedoin is here. Mark, are you here with any questions that you might have on this item? Come on forward, Mark.
I trust that you all, everybody, had a briefing on this and what's expected. Mark, for the benefit of the public, though, kind of give us an overview, a quick overview of what's happening with the Sally property, okay?
Be glad to. Thank you, Commissioners and Madam Manager. This is a piece of property we bought back in 2008, as the manager said, with the purpose of turning around and selling it for the redevelopment of Gaines Street. We had an economic downturn since that time. We're real thrilled to be getting our money back out of it and then some. We feel real comfortable. This is a national real estate development company. They've got a great team. We've got a contract in place that allows the city to review the design and approve that before we go further. So we feel like it's a good catalyst for the redevelopment of Gaines Street, and we feel like this is something we highly recommend for the commission to approve.
I hope the student population are not too upset, because I think this takes out the late-night library, right?
We did that several years.
Oh, we did? That shows you what I know about. Okay. Commissioner?
I'll move the item, Mayor, and I wanted to just comment on it briefly.
Second.
This was kind of what we hoped we would get here. And, you know, there were a lot of criticism about us, you know, of the money we spent on Gaines Street and spending money to buy this property, and what were we doing? And I think we were hoping to do exactly this, is have a really quality project that can be a catalyst for that area. And as if those of you who received the briefing today, I mean, you'll be able to see this project from the Capitol or pretty close to it. And so I think we're, you know, all pretty excited about this getting underway. So I'm glad it worked out. Thank you to our staff for doing a good job in kind of getting this out there, and we're looking forward to working with the developers.
Commissioner Ziffer?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, and if I, as I recall, this is also right in the middle of Phase 2 of Gaines Street reconstruction.
Yes, yes.
And I wanted to reinforce what Commissioner Muschin said, another aspect of this, and that is, between this project, and I know we're still working through some of the permitting issues at the utility site, but between those two, we have a substantial number of people that will be moving onto Gaines Street. And when you have people, then you get restaurants and you get retail, and we're doing it in the right order, because typically, when you do it the reverse, that's when you have problems. So Gaines Street is moving along extremely well, and I'm pleased with, and I appreciate our staff and the consultants we've had in helping make this happen, because it will be a substantial project.
It's a great project, from what I can gather thus far, and as long as it's consistent with what we want on Gaines Street. Thank you very much, and we appreciate the monies, too. Thank you. We got a motion in the second to accept all those favorable.
I have one question.
Sure.
And pardon my ignorance in this. I know it says that the money goes towards Gaines Street. None of it goes to the deficiency fund, or we put all that money on Gaines Street to Gaines Street?
I believe it goes back into -- doesn't go back into Gaines Street, probably, because that was a decision that was made
Then.
Then.
Funded the acquisitions.
Okay.
Came out of Gaines Street, and it had to go back to Gaines Street.
Okay.
Good question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Next item.
The next item, Commissioners, is a report on job creation activities. And just to start it off, in 2011, the city commission identified economic development with a focus on jobs as one of its top priorities. That was partially in response to what was happening with the state related to their workforce. It was also consistent with just the state of the national economy in general. And we did several things to respond to these challenges, and we have a really good story to tell. So we wanted to take an opportunity to tell that story. And I think our two target-issue Commissioners, who are the lead Commissioners and the co-lead for economic development, probably have some statement they want to make about this.
You know, we made a lot of decisions in the back before, and the previous item is an indication of some of those decisions and how things are happening. And this is a continuation of some of those decisions. And we have received a lot of positive news regarding job creation in our community. And I think last week, we even saw a reduction in the unemployment rate, I think it's 7.6% at this point in time. Michael will -- Michael Parker from the city's Economic Development Department, and Beth, is Beth here? She gonna be here, too? Okay. They're gonna make this presentation with regards to our efforts. There are obviously a number of factors that have led to this success, including the policies and programs instituted by us at this level, as well as the collaborative efforts of our community partners, and that's where Beth comes in. Early last year, we hosted a series of meetings that included representatives from the county, FSU, TCC, the EDC, TMH, ooh, all those acronyms. The Tallahassee Chamber, Capital City Chamber, Workforce Plus, and, you know, there were many, many others as well. And this was the brainstorm of what we could do collectively to create and retain jobs. And Commissioner Gillum was one of those persons that spurred us on, if you will, in that effort. So I'm pleased to say that a number of the initiatives which came from those sessions have helped support the improvements in local employment and buying local, local government, local businesses. And it's now that we're now hearing reports about that. And many of these successful initiatives were first vetted through the Economic Development Target Issue Committee, that's myself and Commissioner Ziffer. And who preceded you, Commissioner Ziffer? Who was preceded, Commissioner?
Commissioner Muschin.
Commissioner Muschin. Through Commissioner Muschin as well, that's correct. And so I'm gonna ask Commissioner Ziffer if he's got any additional comments related to this effort.
Well, clearly, unemployment has been an issue, and it continues to be a significant issue for us. And last year, as we moved through the legislative process, clearly, we were impacted by more job loss. And as we look at what's happening across the street, there may be more this year. And as I said, while unemployment rate is still high, fortunately, we continue to come down even with all those losses. And I think a lot of that can be attributed to the hard work on the part of the Economic Development Council and the city and the county working together. I see one of our representatives from one of our new local companies that's here, actually in commission chambers. And we had Economic Development meeting earlier today, and we're hearing more about the successes that we're having in small business and in manufacturing and some of the new startups that we have. And it's extremely encouraging. But one of the things we, as a government, were able to do over the last couple of years, I think it's the figure that was said to me, was over $360 million in public funds that were used to help in construction and get some people back to work. It's almost 100 different projects over the last two years. That's important. But the private sector is got a lot of projects going, and we expect to have more. We just talked about a significant mixed-use project on Gaines Street, the College Town project that we had groundbreaking on. These are good things, and they're encouraging, and they're exciting. And I think as we continue to, with our efforts, we'll see even more. So having said that, I'll now pass it, I suppose, back to Michael. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We're -- Beth and I are gonna try and give you an overview of what's happened in the last year. I do want to kind of make a preamble to this, but to point out that we've had success, but there are macroeconomic issues that we have very little control over, such as consumer confidence and interest rates, which kind of pulled us into this economic malaise. And to get back to where we were before all this started, those things will have to turn around as well. But just as all politics are local, all job creation is local, and we think we've had some success stories. And Beth and I are gonna talk a little bit and show you some of the projects and some of the impacts that we believe we've had on that. And bear with me. Okay. This is just to recognize, these are our partners. Now, when we're dealing with a company or a business that's looking into our community, there are a number of things that they use to analyze us, and it's not just what kind of benefits the city or the county may be to offer them. They want to know what the quality of the workforce is. They want to know what the quality of life is as far as the amenities, such as education. So it's important that we have this group of partners that work with us, and we work very well. When a prospect comes in, we put together a team, and I want to acknowledge the role that everyone that's up on that screen, and there's some others, played in the success that we've had. Let me kind of set the table for where we were last year. In December of last year, while our unemployment rate was lower than the national level and significantly lower than the state level, it was still high by historic standards for Leon County. And we had suffered some very catastrophic losses in our construction and construction port services. We had seen declines in our real estate values. Capital was extremely difficult to get to, and of course, as has been mentioned, we were facing some significant reductions in the state workforce and the university workforces.
I can remember when we first, some of us first got elected, that we were touting an unemployment rate of like 3.2%.
Correct.
And we were concerned. There was a concern then that we didn't have enough workers if we even pruded the right businesses to the city of Tallahassee. So this is a major effort. Now we've got this, so I'm
Story gets better.
Story gets better in that.
Okay. So let me talk a little bit about some of the public-private partnerships that helped us face these challenges. First of all, just to give you an idea where we're focusing our efforts, these are the targeted industries that we are trying to bring and grow in our community. And there's a couple of reasons why. If you look first up there, you see what the average salary for those industries is. And that, when you compare that with the average salary for our particular area, which is around $39,000, then you see that these businesses pay a significant premium to our local business, to our local average wage rate. So, and they're also growth industries. And so this was, this is to kind of cue you up as to where we were focusing our efforts as we looked at bringing new jobs and expanding them. There's several programs that we used, and one is the QTI. Now, some of you may recall that in, back in 2010, we went through a process of approving a number of resolutions for many of these businesses that you see listed in here. And it was in 2011 that we actually started seeing many of these jobs or many of these businesses open up. So you can see that the overall impact of these particular, and we're just highlighting these five here on this chart for you, the anticipated impact is ultimately they'll generate 594 jobs in our community. What you see on the other bar charts show what they've actually, in 2011, they generated 126 jobs. So many of them actually, like such example as Bing Energy and ACS, will be ramping up significantly over the next three years. But in the current environment, adding these 126 jobs was very important. And the other thing I want to point out about the QTI program, we get tremendous leveraging out of the QTI program. The way that works is the state will use its targeted industries, and they will provide tax rebates based on the number of employees that are hired in these targeted industries over a period of time. They require a local match for that, but that local match is 20%. We split that match between the city and the county, so our actual exposure is 10%. And then last year, we were successful in getting some legislative relief that actually reduced that down to 10%. So in these particular jobs, we were actually committed for only 5% of the batch requirements. So we get really good leveraging out of this program. And then we had some special, our own, programs, and I wanted to point out some examples. One outstanding example was So we get really good leveraging out of this program. And then we had some special, our own programs, and I wanted to point out some examples. One outstanding example was the Red Hill Surgical Center and that whole medical campus that was developed adjacent to TMH. We did two things under that. First of all, we used, and I think it's probably the first time, we used some regulatory relief that we have concerning our slope issues, in order to provide them with basically some relief they needed to be able to utilize the property. There was a clause within our slope restrictions that said for economic development purposes, you could get some relief from the amount of restrictions that you had to put on property for developing on slopes. That particular piece of property was, could only have been very underdeveloped, had we not been able to give them this relief. And also, through your targeted business pilot program, we were able to provide them, particularly with the Red Hill Surgical Center, with some tax rebates based on the job creation that they generate. And so the end result is, is that the projected is 43 jobs over the next couple of years, 21 current jobs, $42,000, almost $43,000 is the average salary. Remember, that's significantly higher than the average salary for our area, $9 million worth of capital investment, and I think a facility that will help grow that whole emphasis on healthcare, and Tallahassee being a regional center for healthcare. Then we did some innovative things over the last years, kind of out-of-the-box thinking when opportunities came to us. I'll remind you about the High Performance Magnetics, which is a lot easier to say than the original name for it, when it was tied with the Eder Program. But if you will recall, this was a new technology company that was spinning off of the mag lab. They had, they were tied up with a contract to do, produce and inspect some magnetic cabling that was gonna go under the experimental breeder reactor that was being constructed in France. But to make that happen, first of all, the EDC helped them obtain a $50,000 feasibility grant from the federal government to demonstrate how they could be successful in doing this project. And then where the site that they wanted to build was at the airport, because they had a very unique property requirement, they had to have a building at two ends and a long expanse where they could actually string out this cabling to test it, and the airport was a great place to do that. But there was, they had a cash flow problem. And so the city agreed to give them a short-term $450,000 loan to help them build the facilities out there. It was a good deal for us, because ultimately, those facilities all come back to the city because they were built on the airport. But it was a short-term loan. I'm happy to say that they paid the loan back with the interest before it was due. And as a result of all that, they were able to secure a $5 million loan from the Department of Education. Many of you were at the groundbreaking that we had early in 2011. It was a frigid day, if you remember that. But it's a great example of kind of pulling a bunch of things together and doing something, and it's really helping us kind of position ourselves to be the world's center for high magnetics and advanced materials manufacturing. The other one I'll mention is College Town. You're all very familiar...
You said Department of Education earlier, it's really, I thought it was Department of Energy.
I'm sorry, it was Department of Energy. Thank you. College Town, you're all familiar with that project. I wanted to point out that it was also a kind of an interesting mix of financing. New market tax credits were used. To my knowledge, this is probably the first time new market tax credits have been used in this community. I may be wrong, but certainly, very little of it, and it's a resource that's out there that really can help develop projects if they meet the certain criteria. The CRA, as you know, is contributing 2.4 million. And then our partners in this are the boosters, and that's a unique relationship. They're not your typical private sector collaborator. And so the whole program itself came together, and as you know, that's gonna have some pretty significant impact, not only on economics, but on our efforts on Gain Street. And the last thing I'll mention is the UTECs. That was a retail incentive program that we put together to try and bring retail to our CRA, particularly on Gain Street. And through the loan program that we put together on that, we were able to move them into the ground floor of the residence in on Gain Street. As has been mentioned already, one other thing we did to try and support job growth was this investment in infrastructure. And as has been mentioned already, $360 million was fast-tracking capital expenditures over the last two years to try and get things going. First of all, to try and help that segment of our industry that was hardest hit, which was construction. But also to start dealing all the peoples that supply the materials and everything, and those payroll dollars that those construction workers get, get recirculated in the community. And just a couple of examples that were projects you're probably aware of is Gain Street. There's $10 million being invested in there. Franklin Boulevard, that's a $5 million project that's going on. Airport, substantial amount of money being invested in airport expansion. So all those things were coupled into creating an environment that put a lot of capital dollars out on the table. Now, the other thing is, you know that you adopted back in 2010 a concurrency relief program as a stimulus for new development. That program over the last two years has generated about $4.3 million worth of development. There was $333,000 worth of relief provided in 2011, and that shows you the projects there. Those numbers in both construction are really temporary jobs, but those are all the direct, the indirect, and the induced. And then you see 204 permanent jobs, which are the actual direct jobs and permanent jobs that are generated from each one of those projects. And the important thing to do, look down, is that $2.9 million, that's the estimated annual economic impact of those investments. For $333,000 worth of concurrency relief, we're generating $12.9 million worth of economic impact. That's a pretty good return that program provided. Also, the Community to Redevelopment Agency, I think they were a pretty important partner during these times to try and keep the economic, keep those capital dollars going through. The facade program has turned out to be a great program. We've generated about $2.1 million worth of private sector investment out of that program by investing about a little over $500,000. It's a matching program. We provide 50, up to $50,000, and they have to provide $50,000. But typically, it's about $250,000 in the total renovation costs, and we provide 50. So it's provided us with a great leveraging. The Brownsville Loan Program was another important achievement last year, in that we did that in conjunction with our energy group in the city. The CRA is administering this loan pool. It'll provide, has a million dollars to provide for cleanup and remediation to loan to private sector borrowers. For example, if we had a problem at the Salley property, the developers, we don't, by the way, if they're here, that we would be able to loan them the money at very low interest rates in order for them to do the cleanup, and it's a revolving loan pool. So as the loans are paid back, we get to recycle that money through there. And finally, I want to point out Cascades Park, because I think all of you remember, though it may be forgotten, it's not as red at present, but several years ago, they were having a problem getting that additional money they needed to do the amenities package, and it looked like we were gonna have to proceed with the construction of the stormwater component without being able to fund a lot of the amenities. And the CRA stepped up and made a $1.2 million pledge. We've been paying that over annual installments, and so a good portion of the construction dollars that are going into the community right now for Cascades Park were provided by the redevelopment agency. And now I'm gonna ask Beth to talk a little bit about some of the business support activities that we've done.
Thank you, Michael, and good evening, Madam Manager, Mayor, and Commissioners. It's the EDC's pleasure to join in this report this evening. But before I continue with the remarks, I'd like to recognize a couple of people. First, I'd like to recognize Cara Palmer-Smith. She's here with me this evening, and she is the Senior Manager of Business Development with the Economic Development Council. And I'd also like to thank Dean Minardi with Bing Energy International. He's a board member, and he's here in support as well. I'm gonna begin talking to you about EDC programs that are in place to help us advance our local businesses. A lot of what we've been talking about up to this point are financial incentives and programs that help businesses when they're trying to finance their efforts and their investment in our community. But just as important are the programs that we use to, Michael, I'm gonna have to come down to right there, okay? Are programs that we administer that really have the most impact on the business retention and expansion, but they also support attraction in that they represent service after the sale. And communities that do not have these existing industry programs have a hard time attracting businesses to their community. The first one I'd like to share with you is existing industry roundtables. And this is, it sounds so simple in its concept, but when I talk to consultants across the United States, we are always commended for the effort that we put in to these types of activities. We have, as you know, six different industry sectors that Michael talked about, but then you add to that the Capital Region Manufacturers Roundtable as a special group that like to meet and have certain issues that are unique just to them. Each year, we have somewhere between 14 and 21 forums that are held that average about 40 companies that are represented at each one of those forums. The topics that they cover: workforce, regulatory issues, local, state, or federal, infrastructure that is either needed, you know, kind of looking out, or maybe that we currently have that needs to be improved, and then new technologies. This is our crystal ball. This is how we see into the future and prepare for these industry sectors so that they have what they need in our community to remain strong and continue to grow and continue to add employees. It also serves as kind of a warning notice. This is where we see the red flags. If something's coming along, maybe at the federal level, that's gonna be a huge barrier for an entire industry sector and could have that major impact on our community, then we can rally the troops to get behind that issue and make sure that it's mitigated so that it doesn't have that big impact on us. The Entrepreneurial Excellence Program, as you know, is a favorite of Kim Williams, and he worked hard during his chairmanship to implement this program. It is supported currently by a $450,000 grant from the Small Business Administration, and it is in its second year. Up to this point, because we're about one-third into this second fiscal year that this grant covers, I do expect to be able to stretch those funds into a fourth year, and that is allowed under the federal grant. To this point, we have held three Entrepreneurial Excellence classes, if you will, and if you kind of think about a Leadership Tallahassee-type program, we're really working to instill that camaraderie amongst the companies who are coming to participate. An average of 10 to 12 companies per class, and a good mix. And we've targeted people, talented individuals from the private sector who are looking to start either a new business. We're looking at the researchers in our universities who are close to commercializing their technologies, and we're really finding also students who are not working on the research dollars, but who are encouraged by the entrepreneurial spirit that Eric Barron and others have encouraged at our universities. And so those are the types of individuals who are participating. We have over a dozen mentors from the community, serial entrepreneurs, people with expertise in developing successful business ideas, building a strong business team, marketing strategies and effective sales, proper legal and ethical foundations, funding and financing, and of course, the entrepreneurial insights, who work with these companies over a four-week period. And then as they graduate from the course, we continue to help them with different opportunities that they are faced with. For instance, one of our graduates needed a wet lab, and we were able to help her find that space. She's a cosmetologist with a pharmacy background. And once we found the space, we needed to invest in some equipment, and so the grant was able to help with that equipment as well. This program is called Grow FL, and it is a specialized program that started at the state level and for which our community was a leader. We were one of six communities to take a lead role in marketing this program to a region of the state, and we were responsible for the Northwest Florida region from Tallahassee to Pensacola. It provides short-term, quick turnaround consultancy for second-stage growth companies. So these are companies with between nine and 99 employees and between $1 million and $25 million in revenue, but who have shown growth over the past three years. So the qualifications to being a part of this are quite stringent. They do receive, as I said, quick consultancy. A lot of it has to do, it's very high-end consultancy, things that maybe you would, a larger corporation would get from an Accenture or Deloitte or something along those lines. We've been able to put together a team of experts at the state level to help these second-stage companies either avert bad decisions, confirm the introduction of a new product or service, or expand to new markets, which has resulted in job creation. And this slide here just is an example of the, about 10 different companies in our community, 22 across Northwest Florida, who took advantage of this program and have created 79 jobs throughout this mix.
I will just add to this, Commissioner Ziffer and I heard some testimonials this afternoon at our Economic Development Target Issue Meeting from both King Arthur Tools and the Aegis Corporation. If you would hear how enthusiastic and how appreciative they were for this program, it'd be no question that we gotta make sure it continues, and it really is an outstanding program for them. And King Arthur Tools, by the way, is, what's the new one they're gonna do, King Arthur's?
Magic Whiteboard.
And if you haven't seen the Magic Whiteboard, it really is something that you should see, and they're gonna market that, and I don't think it's a secret, they're gonna, what, Staples is picking them up?
They're working hard right now through a trade show that they're at to get a new contract.
I think it's Staples and Home Depot, a lot. That business is really gonna take off and be something, and they're excited, too.
They are.
Yeah, very excited. Go ahead.
This is, goes a little bit back more towards a financing tool or a tax refund or credit, but it is a program that we manage on behalf of the city and the county, and it's our enterprise zone, which, as you know, is 20 square miles of Leon County, in which we are encouraging growth in our urban core. And this is five, this is six years of activity within the enterprise zone, and at the top it says there that just in 2011 alone, this program created 103 jobs. But the bar to the far left, if you recall, that would be Tennyson Condominiums and Tallahassee Center. And then the purple bar in the middle that had almost 450 applications, that would be Plaza Towers and the Alliance Center. And then to the right there, the light blue, is Hotel Duval. But where you see that big drop from the purple to the blue, it's not just the recession, but it also was a change in the program, where you used to could sign a separate parcel ID to each unit within a condominium. And they took that out of this program in that year. And so it is still very effective, and it is available to both residents and businesses within the zone, and it is due to sunset in 2015. So we're working with Florida League of Cities and the Florida Association of Counties to make sure they understand how important this program is to our region and how effective it is, and that we don't want to see it change, nor do we want to see it sunset. I think at least this first effort was, talked about, Mayor, in your opening remarks, but collaboration is a hallmark of our community. Economic development here is a partnership between industry, education, and our local governments, and it seems to be working well, and I truly am a fan of that format. But there were two major initiatives that were launched this past year through collaboration, one being Tallahassee Works, and some of the things that you saw come from that. Of course, the partners around the table were the folks who were listed on the opening slide, but also our hospitals and small businesses. And you saw expedited permitting, you know, came from this, our local preference procurement changes, as well as the shop local emphasis. And we truly believe that that has had an impact on the improvement in our economy. It's not as easy to quantify. You know, Cara and I were talking about, okay, for the industry sector roundtables, can we send out a survey and kind of find out, make sure we keep up with the number of employees in each of those businesses, because that truly reflects a retention of jobs in our community, and I think this is along those same lines. The second initiative was called BigBendWorks.com, and TCC President Jim Rorodol took the leadership of this. We brought together social services agencies, our workforce board, and the EDC to make sure that state employees who were affected by the layoffs had a one-stop shop of where they could go to get assistance during that period, to find out if they were going to change careers, where could they get job training, and... find out if they were going to change careers, where could they get job training, and if they wanted to look at the growth sectors so that they could make a career plan, um, that they had that information at their fingertips. So I'm going to invite Michael to kind of come back up here with me, and we're going to try to do a, a little song and dance here for the summary, but, um...
The end result of all these efforts is what we've seen recently here, and, um, we've seen reductions, not only national in Florida, but most importantly, we've got a full, a little over a, um, less than a point reduction, um, a full point in Leon County and on nine, point nine of a point reduction in unemployment, um, in our MSA, and those all translate into lots of people that are now working that weren't working a year from, a year ago. So I think that what, you know, almost over a thousand new jobs, we can quantify just in these efforts, and we believe these are very conservative numbers, because there's obviously one, on the private sector that these help generate that aren't counted here, um, and certainly more than a thousand jobs were brought on board to reduce our unemployment rate by almost a full point. And so the address, just to kind of talk about where our direction is, is, as Commissioner Ziffer and the mayor mentioned, we try and vet a lot of these new ideas through the Economic Development Target Issue, and there are several of them that were presented, um, earlier today that I think will ultimately come back before you, that offer a lot of opportunities, but is to continue to focus on those target industries, work on some things that are working very well, like our sense of place, recognizing that new development and redevelopment also has a impact on jobs and continuing those, and so prepare to answer any questions you might have.
Questions, comments?
I'm done.
Um, that's good.
Congratulations.
A lot of good nation is good.
Very, very good presentation. Thank you very much.
Can we get some of this?
Huh?
Can we get this PowerPoint or some of this information in a report or something?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
I'm sure anyone gets a copy.
Well, I think, thank you for your leadership in these efforts. That's what I do.
Thank you, Beth, and, and, uh, Michael. You all have done a great job in moving us forward in these areas, and I know we hear from you quite often in the Target Issue committees, and we know the kind of progress, but we want to make sure that you all understand, too, what kind of progress we're making. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda.
The next item is item number fourteen, Discussion of City Commission Policy 103: Reimbursement and Recovery of Attorney's Fees and Costs in Ethics Complaint Cases, and the city attorney will introduce this item.
Uh, thank you, Madam Manager. Mayor and Commissioners, at your November thirtieth, 2011 retreat, you asked that we develop and bring forward to you a formal policy dealing with, uh, the reimbursement and recovery of attorney's fees in, in ethics complaint cases. We did that, brought you a draft of that to your December fourteenth, uh, meeting. You had a fairly lengthy discussion at that time, and there were essentially two changes to that particular policy that you wanted to see, or to that draft that you wanted to see. We made those changes in what's before you. Those two changes were, you wanted in cases where the reimbursement is sought after a case is complete, uh, for that to be brought to the City Commission for determination of, uh, uh, payment. We made that change, and the second was you wanted some reporting of expenditures as cases proceed, and we've included that at a level of $5,000. So essentially, we would advise the commission if we'd spent $5,000 on a case, and then in $5,000 increments, uh, after that. The, uh, so we've made those changes, uh, and believe the policy is ready for adoption. Be glad to.
Commissioner?
Just a quick question. This was brought up. Does the, um, section 103.09, recovery of city fees, is that consistent with what the state law says?
Yes.
Is this pretty much a reread of the state law?
It is what the state law provides. What you do in that process is you file a motion, a motion is filed with the Ethics Commission. It is the Ethics Commission that makes that determination.
But we file a motion with the...
Yes.
And it's our determination...
Yes.
...whether to file that motion.
Yeah.
I get it. Thanks.
Commissioner?
And if I could ask for you to clarify the point that was brought up on the, the responsible agency, the questions, my understanding of this is that basically if there are statutory references you have to change, just to keep the thing current with state law, you, you will make those, but other than that, you'll just make rec...
Right.
Those are the only changes that you make.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I think, I, I hope that's clear. It says, "City Attorney's Office shall make amendments as necessary to maintain current statutory references," and shall make recommendations for amendments as needed to the City Commission.
Commissioner, thank you.
Any other questions?
I move adoption.
Second.
Properly moved and second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Next item.
The next item is item number fifteen, Discussion of City Commission Policy 102: Reimbursement and Recovery of Attorney's Fees and Costs in Criminal Cases, and the city attorney will also introduce this item.
This is the, uh, the second item that's related. At your, uh, December fourteenth meeting, the commission's clearly expressed a desire to have a policy dealing with criminal cases. Uh, this is that policy. It largely tracks the, uh, uh, the one with regard to ethics, except I will tell you, it starts off with a strong presumption that these fees would not be reimbursed, uh, and it, it, this would be a very rare case I can never imagine frankly happening, but it does provide for that event, uh, and, uh, very similar in terms of if, if an application for reimbursement is filed at the conclusion of a case, uh, that would come to the City Commission for determination. There is no provision for payment of any kind of interim fees in a criminal case, and I just don't think that would be appropriate. And same provisions, uh, with regard to amendments as we just discussed.
Yeah, the only other thing is the scrip letters kind of thing.
Yes, I'm sorry, and I appreciate that. Those all would be numbered 102, 01, 02 sequentially.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Properly moved and second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Next item.
That concludes our policy agenda, um, commissioners, and we do have public hearings at six, but you could go ahead and do your information sharing and sharing of ideas, if you'd like to do that now, since we're still a little bit early.
Um, I have probably just one, I was supposed to get some notes on it, but I will. Uh, last week while in Washington DC, we did get somewhat of an update on the Amtrak matter, and it's kind of moving forward, and, uh, I'll probably have to give you some more in writing on that to see, so you can have some more additional information, but we did get some additional ideas of what's going to happen with that. It's a long shot, but we're going to continue to try and see if we can, uh, restore Amtrak, Amtrak passenger service, because that's what we're dealing with now. The freight service is already there, but the passenger service has been deleted. Uh, as I probably said before, we've, you know, the, the, the good news, I think, is that in the House, Representative John Micah is the chairman, uh, you know, of transportation, and then the, and the ranking member is Representative Corrine Brown, both of whom are from Florida. But the unfortunate thing is they are kind of at opposite, at odds on this matter. But nevertheless, we're going to continue to try and see if we can get appropriate funding for that. Yes, Commissioner?
Um, I had a couple of things, Mayor. One, one is, um, the Walloni and Thornton Road situation. Uh, if you'll recall, this was the, um, uh, at the end of last year, we, we'd kind of been in this discussion about moving the, uh, intersection from Arendelle to Thornton Road, and I was the point person for the city in meeting with a number of the interest groups and trying to get this to, uh, to, uh, some kind of resolution. And I'm happy to report that I think we're very close on this. There's been a lot of give from a lot of sides, and we sort of, I think, have a meeting of the minds. We're trying to quantify that so we can make sure we got a meeting of the minds, but I, I, I think we're very close to being there, so I'm very pleased to report that. I wasn't sure we would be able to do that, but I think we are. So the general timeframe I'm anticipating is that there's a meeting, uh, it's either next week or the week after to try and iron that out, and then I would anticipate, if assuming it does get ironed out, that we would be back in the April-May timeframe to, uh, have the PUD, uh, brought forth for approval, and simultaneously move the request to move the, uh, the intersection to Thornton Road. So that's the, uh, I just wanted to give you an update on where all that was.
Sounds good.
The other, other thing I had, real quick, was what I brought up at the, uh, CRA meeting, uh, the other day, which is on Cascade's Park, um, I, 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 I had been contacted by the KCCI people, I think some of you had too, about the amphitheater, but I have a little bit of a larger concern about just wanting to understand better and think through better when various things at the park are going to come online and kind of what our, uh, strategy is there, uh, and so I'd like to work with our staff and maybe present some recommendations to this board and the IA, and anyone else that's interested in participating in that. We can, you know, notice the meetings or do whatever, but I, I just kind of, I, I'd like personally to get my arms around what we're doing on the amphitheater. I think it at least deserves a little bit more thought. I'm not sure necessarily a different direction, but, um, uh, so I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention.
Do you want to comment on the other matter that, that the public may not realize exactly what this is? It is a stormwater retention project, and they may be getting an, an impression that it's, you know, this huge amenity that's out there, and it is that. It's going to be a great amenity for this community, but we, the public really needs to understand that there are going to be times when this place is going to flood, and it's designed to do that.
Well, and Mayor, what, just along that lines, I mean, one of, we're, I think we ought to end up with this, is a fairly detailed presentation by our staff and the consultants, probably at the IA meeting, about where this is. I, I have to confess, on the flooding part, I don't quite understand what the expected level, what, what does that mean exactly? What, what's going to flood? What's not going to flood? So I think all of that, we kind of need to, but, but the goal is, I, I want to kind of, uh, make sure that people have accurate expectations...
Right.
...when we, when this is unveiled, what's going to be there, what's not going to be there, what we're thinking it's going to do, that sort of thing. So I, I just thought, rather than, in my personal view, rather than a race to, it's got to be done by X date, I'd be more comfortable with us think about this a little bit and make sure we're all kind of, you know, ready to go when we're...
I, I couldn't agree with you more. I think that's absolutely correct. Commissioner?
I just wanted to say that when, when we're discussing this with our groups, that we try to, if there is some way to open parts of this park, I would really like to see at least parts of the park open by 2012. Now, maybe that means, um, maybe that means a soft opening on other areas excluding the, the part around the amphitheater, but already I see the amphitheater taking precedence over the original intent of the park, um, which is recreation and stormwater management. As far as, I think that Blueprint staff can pretty easily recommend or fill everyone in on the levels of flooding, but I, I think that the folks that are, um, working on the stage area of the amphitheater are, are aware of all this. The problem is the unexpectedness of the weather, and I think that's where we have a, a, a difference of expectation on the part of the public. I mean, it sounds almost to hear some people talk like we are building a performing arts center, but we're building it instead in Cascade's Park. This is only partially covered. It is subject to rain. If we are down there every two weeks with a Keith Urban concert, we're going to run into major problems, and people are going to be looking at us like, well, what the heck? Why did you do this? And so I don't want to be there. I don't want to be in the situation where we've got yet another public facility like the stadium, which is in a flood zone. And then when things flood, everyone looks around and says, well, what the, why, why did you make this mistake? Which isn't a mistake, as long as we keep everybody's level of expectation at, on, on target to be in line with reality.
No, I, that's the point. Your point's well made. Commissioner Ziffer?
Just to follow up, um, and, and this is probably a good example of, as much as we've discussed this park, there still is an awful lot of different information that's out there. Um, I, I think with great confidence we can say the park will open at the end of 2012. Um, the question is, what will the stage be? But the water park will open, the waterfall will open, the three-point some-odd miles of walking trails will open, the green area where people will be able to enjoy being outside and being town will open, and, um, so all those things are going to happen, but I think Commissioner Mushton is right, there's no need for us to rush into getting one of the amenities done until we make sure we get it exactly right for what this community expects, what we can deliver. I think that's probably even more important, and so, um, I think it's a good idea that we do get our arms around it, and we have a more thorough presentation by staff, particularly since it's going to be the responsibility of our Parks and Recreation Department to manage this thing when it doesn't.
That's true. That's very, that point was very well made, too, at that time. Thank you very much. Any other things to share? All right, we'll be in recess until six o'clock. Back from recess, Mr. Assistant City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, we have eight public hearings tonight, and I'll turn it over to Jim.
Thank you. The first public hearing, item 16, is the second public hearing on a Notice of Proposed Change Number 7 to the Southwood Development and Regional Impact. We have a number of speakers, but before we start with speakers, I'd like to ask Karen Jemminville, Director of Growth Management, to bring us up to date and present the item.
Please do. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. There are three primary components to the NOPC that's before you this evening. The first one relates to converting some of the physical off-site improvements that are required to be constructed to proportionate share payments. And those payments would be pipelined into significant benefit projects, which is consistent with the memo of understanding that we have between the county and DOT city. St. Joe has already paid a little bit over $10 million in cash for transportation mitigation, and they've constructed about $9.8 million worth of off-site improvements. If we convert the remaining improvements that they have off-site to prop share, the additional payment would be a little bit over $4.6 million. And like I said, that would go into the significant benefit program. And we're recommending approval of that particular change because it also saves the city about $1.3 million in right-of-way cost that would be required as part of constructing one of the improvements that's required in the existing development order. The second improve, the second change that's being recommended is really memorializing a seven-year extension that the legislature has authorized for DRI development orders. There were two extensions, a four-year and a three-year. So this will memorialize the development order extension deadline, and it would move it from December 31st of 2020 to 2027, December 31st of 2027. And the third change is really the most substantive that has raised the most concern from the neighborhood, and it relates to the timing of the construction of some of the internal roadways within the development. And I know you've received a lot of public comment on this, and there were some petitions that we've attached to the agenda item as well. One of the main roadways that has been the subject of discussion is a connector that has not been built, that is a southern extension of Biltmore Road and an eastern extension of Schoolhouse Road. We have been in discussions with St. Joe up until the date, time of this meeting, actually, to try to see if we could get that constructed a little bit sooner. We were aiming for 2014, and we have some options for possibly moving some of the prop share payments out to a later date to allow that roadway to be constructed sooner. And I'm going to talk about that in more detail when I talk about the options. But at this point, I'm going to ask Gabe to come up and talk a little about some of the other concerns that the neighbors have had with regard to Conley Elementary and pedestrian safety, and some of the options that we've worked on that we think can alleviate some of the neighborhood concerns.
Thank you, Karen. Good evening, Commissioner Mayor. I've got an aerial here that'll help identify the issues a little bit better. Conley Elementary School is up in this area off of Orange Avenue, this segment right here being Orange Avenue. The extension that Karen was talking about on Orange is basically this extension here to Southwood Plantation Road. You can see San Augustine up here. Conley, Conley has been experiencing quite a bit of problem with the parent pickup, primarily in the afternoon. Orange Avenue is currently just a two-lane roadway. It is planned to be a two-lane roadway for the duration of the development of, of Southwood. But when, when, when the parents pickup is occurring in the afternoon, the parents are actually queuing up out onto Orange Avenue and blocking that traffic. In fact, we met with the school district to try and come with, to come up with some, some solutions. And both the school district and my staff met on Monday. Monday in particular, when we were out there, the backup out on, on Orange Avenue was 15 minutes. By the time the first car queued up on Orange Avenue and the last car cleared, it was a total of 15 minutes. But we did observe a lot of things with regards to its operations. We have a lot of parents that are stopping in the medians, parking in the medians, walking up to the school, picking up the kids, taking them, taking them out. During that, we came up with some solutions, some immediate and some that are going to require a little bit more study for, in terms of the feasibility. The immediate solutions are that we agreed that we were going to put up no parking signs on the median to restrict that from occurring. We agreed to take the school zone that's currently in front of Conley and extend it to the east. For some reason, the school zone was installed halfway up the frontage of Conley Elementary School. So we're going to take the school zone, the eastern end, and extend it to the east so that the pedestrians that are using and crossing Conley can be under the protection of the school zone, which currently they're crossing outside the school zone. So that, that'll help. We have some parents that are walking up, picking up parents and taking them across outside that school zone. So that's the immediate action that we'll take. Subsequent to that, we are working with the school district to study the feasibility of two, two other options. One is to install a traffic light at the intersection of Conley and, or, excuse me, Orange Avenue and Four Oaks. That's at the main entrance to Conley. And by, by doing that, we should be able to better control both the pedestrian crossings as well as the traffic flow through there. Right now, the way it's operating, it's under, it's operating under a three-way stop, and there's a crossing guard that helps the kids get across Orange Avenue. That crossing guard, it's, it's pretty much any time he wants to cross, the kids, he can, but he queues up the traffic, the vehicle traffic, and it queues up and backs up so that the people exiting the rear entrance or the parent pickup area can't get out. So it does queue up quite a bit. With the traffic light there, that can meter and monitor that a little bit better. So that's, that's one option that we're looking at. And the other option is to add a lane in the median, a through lane in the median just east of Conley in the westbound direction. By doing so, we can take the existing westbound lane and use it as a queuing lane. There's just too much demand to, for the school with the parent pickup not to try to accommodate that, so we would accommodate that on, on that. We're looking at the feasibility of both of those, and we'll be reporting back with regards to that. The other issue that's been of concern that was identified to us was down here on the south end of, oh, boy, sorry, on the south end of, in the, in the Terrebonne and Grove Park area. Okay, that's that street that comes up between Florida High and JP2 and ties into Grove Park.
Mm-hmm.
That is currently a single stop intersection, Terrebonne stops, and, see if I can get there. I'm not even sure, I don't know where this thing sent me. This is Google Maps, I don't know where it sent me.
It's on there.
Go to your right. It's just under where the two lakes meet.
Right here. Your Salinger? Yeah. Right here. Thank you. Okay. Here's JP2, and here's Florida High. Here's Terrebonne. Down here, we have Schoolhouse Road. What, the, the connection that Karen was speaking to of Schoolhouse Road is the, the extension from here, and then the extension of Biltmore here. So that's where, that's where that connection would be. Now, at this location, we currently have Terrebonne stopped, and then Grove Park moves through. Grove Park, or Terrebonne, this location, intersection, is where we have a connection from the Central Park area out with, with the sidewalks for, for that. We have a lot of crossing traffic there, pedestrian crossings there. There is some conflicts between the vehicular traffic and the pedestrians there, so we are going to install an all-way stop. We're going to consider that stop as temporary at this point, only in, in the sense that the entire network in Southwood is not installed yet, so there are some altered traffic patterns. Once that network is installed, we will reevaluate the all-way stop, and if it warranted at that point, we'll maintain it. If not, it'll be reevaluated. And that's the, that's the other solution. So we will be installing an all-way stop there at Terrebonne.
That's the immediate kind of solution until we get a permanent solution?
Yes. The signage, the signage, the solutions, all three of them are immediate.
Oh. Any questions, okay? I guess, well, my question's a little bit more generic. I know this is hindsight, and as hindsight is always 2020, but I'm just curious how we built this school at that place without taking into consideration the traffic flow in that school. I don't know what happened. This is, I, I really honestly don't know what happened. I looked at that, and it doesn't make any sense. Somebody had to know what the traffic conditions would be at a school, at that location at the time the school was built. I don't know who made the decisions. I don't know it's hindsight, but to me, that's where the problem started. This should have been done when that school was built. And I don't know if it was our fault, we, permitting or whatever, or whether it was the school board's fault, whether it was St. Joe's fault, or who. But that, to me, is where this whole thing originated. And I, again, I know that's hindsight. And I don't know if you want to, I don't know if we need to even opine on that, to tell you the truth, Gabe, but, because we've got to move forward.
We should hear the answer.
You want to hear it? They want to hear, how did that happen? Or do you know?
Quite honestly, I'm, I'm working off of memory on it, but the fact, the fact is that a lot of these schools were actually planned, when, when we were looking at them in the planning stage, there was supposed to be a lot more bus traffic to and from the schools, thus reducing the number of individual parent pickups. More of that, more of that is occurring, more, more individual parent picks occurring than, than what was planned for. The same situation was happening at Florida High as, as is happening at Conley. We have, we have a parent, individual parents are picking up their, their.
Yeah, well, I know that, that's, that's a common practice as far as I'm concerned, Gabe. And I mean, I just, what I'm saying is, should, this kind of, this kind of issue or problem should have been anticipated. And I'm not pointing the finger at you or anybody else, but I'm pointing the finger at, at the whole idea of building a school, building even these schools without taking into consideration what we always call concurrency and traffic flow, and how to get kids in and out of there. They knew what the population of these schools would be. And it just seems to me that there was not appropriate or adequate planning in that. I mean, the schools are wonderful, great, but you, this is a mess, and it really is. And now, we'll have to figure out a way to resolve it, but at this point, okay. Anybody else?
Well, are we going to have a discussion now, or do we want to?
Well, let's wait till Karen gets.
Commissioners, with regard to options for action on this item this evening, our original recommendation was to approve the item, find the NOPC consistent with the comprehensive plan, and make a clarification that the roadway, Schoolhouse Road and Biltmore Southern Extension would be constructed no later than December 31st, 2020. Since that time, like I said, we've been working very closely with St. Joe. Another option that's available for consideration is, like I said earlier, requiring the construction of that roadway segment by December 31st of 2014, and bumping out the proportionate share payment dates. As of now, they're proposed to make their, they had proposed to make their first payment in 2013. We've gone back and forth with St. Joe in terms of what would be an appropriate amount of time to bump that payment out. Staff felt comfortable with bumping it out to about 2016 to require that payment. St. Joe committed to 2018. So that's really where we are at this point. We've been, you know, discussing with them up to the point that, up here at the podium. Another option is to give us more time, continue the item for two weeks, or continue it for a month, depending on whether you want to have a public hearing on an off-meeting at the, the following meeting after this one. But what we wanted to do, we may be able to get comfortable with the 2018. We just haven't had the time to do the analysis that we'd like to do in advance to bring to you, to demonstrate what that would mean for significant benefit projects. Conceptually, we feel that the money collected so far for each significant benefit pot is minimal compared to the overall cost of the roadway improvement, but we like to be more specific in getting back with you in terms of what that might mean more specifically, and in terms of maybe some multimodal projects that may be able to be completed earlier if we went with the 2016 date rather than the 2018. But we do have St. Joe's commitment to the 2018 prop share start payment date and construction by 2014. So I just wanted to offer those options on the table for the commission for discussion.
Karen, you, you may want to explain what happens if the NOPC is not approved in terms of extensions and that kind of thing.
If the NOPC is not approved, the existing development order stays in effect. St. Joe would be required to construct four off-site roadway improvements instead of converting the money to prop share, so we wouldn't get the money in a significant benefit program. But in terms of extensions, the legislature authorized the seven-year automatic extension, so the development order deadline would automatically be moved to 2027. We were memorializing it because we were already opening up the NOPC and wanted to memorialize that in the document, but the overall build-out date and expiration date would be moved to 2027. What is important to note is that the internal roadway, the, the, internal roadway improvements that are identified in the NOPC now, St. Joe has committed to not bump that out to 2027. They've committed to build those roads by December 31st, 2020. So that deadline would stay the same, which is really what we have under the existing development order. My recommendation that I had initially put forward was to also make a clarification that those internal roadway improvements also included the southern extension of Biltmore and the eastern extension of Schoolhouse Road, which wasn't specifically called out in that chart. But St. Joe didn't have an objection to that.
If I understand that correctly, I want to make sure I do, that if in fact the NOPC is not approved, the state statute by law gives them the right to delay the extension of Orange Avenue legally, legally until 2027?
Orange Avenue, we actually have a separate agreement for, and that, the, the timing of the, if the NOPC is not approved, the clock does not start for the end date for the construction of Orange Avenue. At a previous meeting, there was a, an agreement to extend, do a temporary extension of Orange Avenue to Southwood Plantation Road, but that timing doesn't kick in until the NOPC is approved.
I guess, let me ask it another way. Could this, this, could that, the, the non-approval of the NOPC, could that in fact delay the extension that we want tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
Legally, it could, as a practical matter.
Yes.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
We don't want that to happen. I don't want to give them a legal option, although as a practical matter, I, I think we can, we can get this extension done. But I, I want people to understand that if we don't approve the NOPC, the state statute may give them, St. Joe, the ability to delay doing what we might want them to do for a longer period of time. That's my understanding.
That's correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I think it's important, if you'll allow me, where we are now is, as the mayor just said, if we don't approve the NOPC, basically everything will take some time. What, if I understand correctly, is on the table, if we move forward where it sounds like, I think we're moving forward, there'll be some changes at Conley Elementary as far as traffic flow. We're working with the school board on perhaps signalizing that intersection. We're adding a stop sign, three-way stop at Terrebonne. Orange Avenue will be extended to where Biltmore would normally come in, and it will look like the existing Orange Avenue. Then there'll be a temporary connector to Southwood Plantation Road. And if I understand correctly, if we can work out these other money issues, we will, and that'll be done within 14 months, the Orange Avenue extension. St. Joe has agreed, if we can work out these dates, to go ahead and start construction on the Biltmore to Schoolhouse Road connector and have that completed by 2014, basically 24 months.
That's correct.
Or so. Which would be, if I'm not mistaken, basically everything that's being requested. And is that, where's Carolyn? Carolyn, is that basically right? And George, that's basically right. So really, what we're coming down to is this year that St. Joe and the city can agree to on when they would start to have to make their proportional share payments, correct?
That's correct.
And that's based upon us making determination as to when and what our commitments are for where those dollars would go if they actually had to start to make that in 2014.
That's correct. The, the difference would be what we're forego, what the city would forego between that time period, between the 2016 and the 2018 for the start of those payments.
I appreciate everyone that's here today. Most of them I know. I have family members in the front row because they actually live in Southwood, wearing their shirts. And I, I, for one, and I know my, probably the other commissioners, I can't speak for them, but I've received an awful lot of correspondence, and I think I've responded to each and every one of you with an email. I really don't want to do that again. I really don't. As much as I like them, I really would prefer, if there's any way we can come to some closure...
We can put them in a, you can put them in a Southwood group.
At this point, so that the Southwood residents know their roads are going to be built, that we know as a city, their biggest cheerleader, the city knows that we're not going to be in all likelihood put in an odd situation with money flow, and St. Joe knows what they're going to have to do, because I know that they're anxious to go ahead and get this done. So is there a way we can do this tonight? So is there a way we can do this tonight?
Well, if we don't want to find out what that differential is in terms of extending payments on the prop share and how that impacts us, we certainly can do it because that's the only thing that, as I understand it, that's out there at this point. We don't have an analysis of the extension of the date to pay the proportionate share. Other than that, I don't know of any reason why we could not.
If I'm not mistaken, and may be wrong here, we've not discussed this, if we don't approve the NOPC, the city is going, what is it, 1.4 or 1.5?
It's a little over 1.3 million.
1.3 million dollars in right-of-way costs that we're going to have in the next year or two anyways, correct?
Actually, it's probably a little bit later than that, but we would incur that cost.
So if we don't do this, it's going to cost us money anyways. And if we do this, it might cost us some, but at least we know this project is going to be complete. I will tell you, because I do know this, one of the reasons an awful lot of parents are taking their kids to school is because they don't feel comfortable with them riding their bikes and walking. This development was based upon walkability to the schools, to the town center, to neighbors. And right now, it works in most of the community, but it doesn't work to our schools, and that's a problem. So I think, to a degree, we solve some of these other issues by making it safer. And the improvements at Connolly will do that, the improvements at Terribone will do that, and this Biltmore to Schoolhouse Road will do that. So I, for one, would like to solve the problem tonight.
Commissioner, question.
Well, and I echo that. Thank you for Commissioner Ziffer for your leadership and the amount of time you put into this, staff, everybody here. I mean, for one thing, whatever we do, we want to get the Schoolhouse Road thing dealt with. So, and I think, as Commissioner Ziffer laid out, really the only issue is kind of on this, you know, when does the, you know, St. Joe money come in, which is unrelated to getting Schoolhouse Road?
Yes, you're correct.
And I would really prefer not to defer this and not to have to have everybody come back down here and that sort of thing. So I'm going to, I mean, I guess it's premature to make a motion, but I think I'm okay, you know, I mean, we could either ask the staff in St. Joe to kind of work, go work this out again, work that piece of it out and kind of, you know, move the rest of it along. And as long as that gets worked out, it doesn't need to come back or something along that line. But that would be my inclination to do it tonight. And then, assuming we do that, as much as we would love to hear from every single one of you.
Oh, that's why we're here.
If the road's going to get built, then, you know, please feel free not to have to come, you know, say the same thing that the person in front of you just said.
I guess, yeah, I like that, too. I would love to get this done tonight because I got the emails as well, a lot of them. And my phone has been ringing off, which I don't mind too much, but I get constituent calls all the time, so that's fine.
Mr. English.
I just want to remind you, we do have speaker slips from about 13, 14 people that if they still want to speak, we need to go ahead and hear them sooner rather than later. I think it's fine because you're trying, you're bringing this into a landing.
One thing, I would like for them to know what they're speaking to.
What?
I would like for them to know what they're speaking to. And I just want to be clear that I understand what they're speaking to as well. It seems that we can get started on Orange. We can get started on Schoolhouse Road, hopefully to be finished by 2014. We will have to give up receiving money for prop share for a period of time. Right now, it's 2013, correct?
Correct.
And you say that they are comfortable with 2018, and I want you to know that I am comfortable with 2018 as well because personally, I've, this is internal, this is the primary, this is the priority to settle right here, is to get these roads completed. And what happens with an extra turn lane on Appalachian Parkway here and there is not nearly as important, I don't think, in this discussion as this particular situation is here. There's not that much roadway. So am I clear that those are, that we could conceivably approve this NOPC with those changes? Is that right?
That's correct, Commissioner. And we also, when you get ready to make a motion after the speakers, you've heard from the speakers, I can read into the record the letter of the condition and the option that I'm hearing that you're asking for.
Everybody comfortable with the 2018 date? I mean, that's the critical thing that we're talking about right now, 2018 as opposed to 2016. Because if we defer receiving payments until 2018, there's other payments that we could use for other projects. But if, so I think we need to understand that.
Based on the list that was presented to me that we had anticipated they might go to, I don't think any of those are on the immediate horizon for various sundry reasons. So I feel comfortable with 2018.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we all understand, we all on the same page on that one, okay? Let's start with speakers.
Mayor.
Speaker. On this item, please.
We have about 13 or 14 speakers on this item. I'll ask speakers, when you approach the podium, to give your name and address for the record, please. And you'll have three minutes. There will be a light at the podium that is green. It'll turn amber when you have 30 seconds remaining and red when your time's expired. First speaker will be John Ray, followed by Dale Allen.
Thank you for this opportunity and thank you for your service to this community. I think it's the will of this crowd to spare you by PowerPoint and a lot of speakers tonight, but I think it's a happy ending, quite frankly. The residents that are here tonight are residents who have believed for four years that we have a broken roadway network, that these roads are needed now, and that they serve a broader purpose than just serving the homesites, future homesites. And all we can say is thank you for listening. This is very important to us. Every one of us loves our community, and that's why we're here. So thank everybody. That's all I can say. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Next is Dale Allen. Mayor and Commissioners, it appears that the light, at least on our side, is not functioning. I don't know if the speakers can see it or not, but the timer is running.
It's not working, so we'll.
My name is Dale Allen, 3186 Berenger Hill Drive. This is a good workout, thank you very much. I would like to tweak it just slightly, nothing legal here, but just some other recommendations. Until the road network is finished, I know you're going to put a three-way stop at Terribone and Grove Park. There's a couple other places that desperately need something like that, and I'd like you to ask your staff to go back out and look at it. There's also a major pedestrian crossing at Berenger Hill into the park, and there's a stop sign, but Grove Park has the right-of-way flow, and a lot of people trying to get across there feeds into the network up to the school. So could you look at a three-way all-stop at that intersection as well?
Sure.
Okay, that would be one. The other one would be, because traffic has nowhere else to go without this road network complete, it has to go up Mossy Creek or Berenger. You can help direct some of that traffic if your staff would consider no right turns onto Berenger or Mossy Creek in the morning, making them go to Mulberry and up because that road was designed for that. So just some other tweaking, I think, would help temporarily until the road network gets up and then reevaluate it.
Okay. Some of us don't know the details that you have, but I'm sure.
Well, I'm saying it so the staff could hear it.
Gabe does, okay?
Okay. There may be a few other like, but that would really help.
We'll have Gabe talk to you about that, okay?
Next speaker is Alva Brady, or Grady, followed by Maria Leon.
I just walked in. I was lost. I was in North Monroe. I am Alva Brady. I do live in Southwood, Mossy Creek, and I think the PowerPoint is going to show you some illustrations.
Maybe you need to talk to some folks.
She's being waved off.
She just came in. Wonderful news has happened. We need to tell you.
You did great.
Oh, I can go sit down? Thank you very much.
The most persuasive speaker we've ever had.
You explained that so well. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Maria Leon, followed by Carolyn Bibler.
Hi, my name is Maria Leon, and I live at 3745 Longfellow Road. I'm an eight-year resident of Longfellow, of the Southwood community, and I was prepared with the whole script to share with you as to what our need was, but thank you very much for listening and thank you very much for taking action on this matter.
Next is Carolyn Bibler, followed by Eli Nortellus.
Again, we're not going to do our whole dog and pony show that we had for you because apparently we don't need to. I just want to tell you that I so appreciate all of you Commissioners and Mayor. You listened to us, you heard us, and we just so much appreciate it. My faith in my government is, I don't want to say I never had any before, because I did, but it's definitely doubly renewed, so thank you very much.
You're the one that gave me the presentation, by the way, that really was outstanding about this whole issue. Thank you very much.
Eli Nortellus, seven-year resident of Southwood. My sentiment exactly. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, Mayor, those comments. We really appreciate it. As a current supervisor on the CCD over in Southwood, we're going to continue working with, I guess, Gabe and working out some other things that we can probably do, stop signs, mediums, and so forth. But so far, thank you for the work you guys have done here today. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Nortellus, can we have your address for the record, please?
Yeah, 4326 Grove Park Drive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is David Ramba.
Thank you.
Followed by Debbie Danton.
I'm not a resident of Southwood, 506 Frank Shaw Road, and I felt very compelled to help on this issue because I was very concerned for the safety and the quality of life for the residents of Southwood. And I've known Carolyn Bibler for a long time, and I helped do a cursory analysis of the transportation analysis. And the one thing that I wanted to say is that extending the major roadway network was absolutely needed, so thank you. You took great action at doing that necessary. I was with the City of Tallahassee when this development, I was a city traffic engineer when it was originally approved, and the intent was always to build the major roadway network, not wait until the adjacent parcels were developed adjacent to it like you do for local roads, but build that major collector arterial roadway network to keep the traffic off of the local roads. And I just spoke with Gabe Menendez, and we did talk a little bit more about some of the details around the Connolly School, and so we appreciate the city's work on this, and I think that will help solve the problems. Once those roads extended, a lot of those operational and safety issues should go away. And thank you.
What do you think about a roundabout at the end of that road going into?
I have already proposed some roundabouts, and I've talked to Commissioner Gifford about those.
Ziffer.
Ziffer, sorry. Sorry, Gail.
You're not the only one that's done that.
Sorry, Gail.
It's Zil Gifford.
And roundabouts are definitely better and help reduce delay than multiway stop signs. And you have, right now, at Orange Avenue and Four Oaks, a multiway stop, and also at Schumard Oaks and Four Oaks, a multiway stop, also at Schoolhouse Road and Four Oaks, a multiway stop. And I'd propose looking at roundabouts at all of those, and some of those could be done very inexpensively, and I've prepared some concepts on those. So yes, they help minimize the delay, and the delay experienced right now is causing cut-through traffic. So yes, I support that.
No, I just thought I'd throw you that softball because we had a conversation.
Absolutely. I support your new proposed policy.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Wayne Toothman, followed by Greer Kirkpatrick.
Just real quick, thank you very much. This is something we've been working on for a year. I think you're on the right track. I would like to see the internal roads built before we build outside roads, and I think this method will do that. And thank you for your help, and thank your staff in St. Joe also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greer Kirkpatrick, followed by Catherine Jones.
Hi, I'm Greer Kirkpatrick, 2562 Twain Drive, and I've been a resident since 2006, and I'm very thankful for the good news tonight. I would just like to give you a specific example. Prior to Orange Avenue being built out the way it is now, Twain Drive was one of the major cut-throughs, and it was terrible. Big uphill, coming in the opposite direction downhill, and it was just not safe for my children. I have two young boys, and all my neighbors have young children. So just to reiterate the importance, I know you've heard it, but having these major roads built actually relieves the internal traffic, including not only during school time, but you've got the residential service vehicles like air conditioning and lawn services, and they tend to have trailers, distracted driving on cell phones. All these things help get mitigated by having these arterials, so thank you again.
Catherine Jones will not need to speak, so Joseph McVeigh will be next.
Who's next?
Joseph McVeigh may have left.
Oh, here he comes.
He'll be followed by Gary Jordan.
Joe McVeigh in that 3245 Thoreau Avenue. Last year, we were here in March, and I was prepared to come in and say, nothing's been I'm very thankful. I went to an association meeting last night. I found out that they were going to finish some other roads in Southwood, the CCD people, and with you folks behind this, I made my day. Thank you.
Welcome.
Next speaker is Gary Jordan.
Very happy to thank you.
That's the shortest speech Gary Jordan has ever given.
Robin Spilius.
Robin Spilius, 3700 Biltmore Avenue. I come as representing Florida High. I'm the president of the PTSA, that's the Parent Teacher Student Association, and I just wanted to say that, of course, I had to put my speech down, too, and I wanted to thank you very much on behalf of the 1,700 kids coming from eight counties. We have tried in the past through Department of Transportation to do some Safe Routes to School program and workshop. With that, we've gotten some relief with the crossing guards, and we are using our walking school bus to increase walkability in our community. But I also want to just put this out to you for future acknowledgement to, we just want to make sure that we are working with the administration at the school whenever the construction crews start to build the roads. So we just want to make sure we have that communication and way ahead of time so we can make sure we have the proper folks outside and making sure, of course, that the kids are always safe. And I thank you.
That's the last speaker on this item, Mayor.
Oh, okay. Comments?
I'm sorry.
What? We have one more?
One more.
Raise your hand if you have.
Larry Hendricks is.
Oh, Jerry Hendricks on this issue.
I did not see the item number.
All right.
Larry Hendricks, 406 Alpha Avenue. I don't know exactly what transpired earlier. I was late getting here, and I'm ill-prepared. I just want to make sure that the burden of this doesn't fall on the rest of people at Tallahassee, especially in that established neighborhoods who still have existing needs to their infrastructure that have been being put off year after year after year, particularly on the south side. I believe that the subsidization of Southwood has come somewhere between a half of a billion and $1 billion so far. I don't want to see any addition to that. If anybody disputes that, I'd be glad for them to show me on a spreadsheet or a paper that that cost has been borne by St. Joe. I don't believe that to be the case. I don't think you'll be able to find that to be the case in any community that St. Joe has entered in this state. They generally come into a community and leave with a great deal more than they bring to the table. I would like to assure that that doesn't continue to happen in this town, whether it's St. Joe or Waloney or whatever outside interest comes to this community and continues to pillage and leave here with more resources than they bring to the table. I would love to see a study and that shows me on paper what exactly the cost of development is to this community. I believe it's substantial, and I don't believe that cost is being borne by those outside interests that come into this town. St. Joe came into this town, when they left, they laid off 800 people with, I believe, two weeks' notice. They have not substantially contributed their fair share to either the transportation, the school system, the stormwater. the school system, the stormwater, or in any other manner to the infrastructure, as far as I can tell, that it comes anywhere close to the adequate cost that's being borne by the rest of us here in this community. I'm tired of this going on, as everybody well knows, and I would like to see to it come to an end. I don't know if this is another example of that, I suspect it is, but please prove me wrong if that's not the case. Thank you very much.
Next speaker. That is the last speaker on this item.
Okay. Commissioner?
Sure. Just a couple of additional points before we get to the motion, which I guess Karen is going to give us some clue as. The first, there's something, a couple of things I need to do. The first thing I need to do is, back in mid-December, or it may have been our meeting in November, I can't remember, when Abe Prado from St. Joe came before us, I was, let's say, extremely direct with him. And quite frankly, at that time, I didn't have all the information in front of me as far as where delays were, and I did this at the CDD meeting, and I will apologize to him today because I put on you some things that quite frankly weren't your responsibility, and for that I apologize. I will tell all of you that are here today, your efforts have made a significant impact on this, and I appreciate each and every one of you following through, making emails, writing emails, calling and coming and seeing us. But I will also tell you, quite frankly, because I've been involved in enough meetings, while many of you may perceive St. Joe as not a very friendly partner, they have been in this. There have been times when they have been, let's say, not always totally cooperative, but what we've ended up with did not have to happen, because they don't have to do any of these things. So I want to thank the neighbors, my neighbors, for participating, but I also want to thank St. Joe for stepping up and doing the right thing, because it is the right thing. I want to add, and I had a conversation with George Gonzalez this morning, one of the things that I think a lot of us as Southwood residents are unhappy with that hasn't been discussed today is our town center. It has not turned out the way we thought it would. And quite frankly, the town center impacts the future of the rest of our roads, when we have some widenings and when other things occur. So, I spoke to Mr. Gonzalez, and he's agreed to this, and I'm going to ask, Carolyn, you're going to lead this. A group of neighbors, I'd suggest we bring in some real estate representatives, and sit down with St. Joe and talk about, what are we going to do with our town center? And how can we improve it? And not only that, as many of us recall, when there was discussion of some apartments being at the end of town center, let's start to talk about how we deal with that, because quite frankly, our town center needs a lot of people living near it. And so we need to have that discussion so that when the next thing occurs, we're prepared. And so, George, I know you've agreed to this, Carolyn, if you would help us, because I can tell you, a lot of these people in this room would be a lot happier with St. Joe if we had more in our town center. And the last thing is, and it is important, because I know it's one of the last things, it's really difficult to fix. It's kind of funny, you know, you watch TV ads today, and it talks about 4G technology and 3G technology, and the 4G technology, the person gets a text message five seconds quicker. That's insane. Is that really that important? The problem is Riverton, where Eli, you live, you know, people save 20 or 30 seconds by cutting down Riverton instead of going the way they're supposed to go. And that impacts the children and the residents that live on Riverton. I don't think we're going to change human behavior, so we probably need to do something with that intersection of Esplanade and Four Oaks. There is a lot of real estate there, there is costly to do roundabouts, but I will tell you, we probably ought to take a look and see what those costs are. That intersection needs to improve, because that's not going to go away. Those are my comments. I will say, I don't think $1 billion has been spent on the road system, and I really would appreciate when people speak that they deal with the facts. And that's what I've liked about working with the neighbors, they've dealt with the facts, and thank you for doing that.
Any other comments? Commissioner?
Yeah, just one, just one appreciation to the neighbors who came and met with us and were so really wonderfully informed about everything going on in the neighborhood. I did want to make the comment about, you know, the fact that these two sections that have been negotiated to be completed are major collector roads, and significant development has taken place inside of them. And I know that this is just the beginning of development that's supposed to happen out in Southwood, there are several other phases that are supposed to occur. And I think to help us avoid being in this position again, where the city commission is negotiating between neighbors and the development company, I hope that St. Joe has plans of completing these major collector roads, which are such vital parts of the artery, external and internal to, to that development. No family who bought into Southwood probably anticipated the amount of traffic that they've experienced on their local road system. And because this was a huge combined plan, it didn't come to us, you know, in one-offs, this was a huge vision that people bought into, there's very little, in fact, we can really do about this. Even now, we're not really forcing your hands, you all are coming to the table to participate with the neighbors to get this done. But in the future, you know, this commission has to insist in future developments that these major collector roads are completed, because the alternative is, is people are using local residential streets where kids are playing, where families reside, where people's very quality of life comes to life. And I would just hate to be in this position again of neighbors for a year and plus having to negotiate this space when so much money has already been poured into and they bought into this vision and into this dream. So, you know, certainly we'll vote for the compromise here tonight, but, but want to do so by also saying that the city's interpretation and, and any of our interpretations with regards to extending the contract on this for the future, I think we have to insist on major collector roads being a huge part of the completed effort, because for this to be seen as sort of, you know, a, a nice-to-do and not a must-do, I think is unacceptable. I think it's an absolutely must-do to complete that road system. That's it.
Commissioner.
Commissioner.
I just want to thank all of you who took the time to come up here, who took the time to write us, but I especially want to thank Carolyn Bibler and John Ray, because without their having made maps and come in and explained the situation thoroughly to us, and let all of you know the status of this project, the fact that it was up for a vote, I really think you need to put both these people on your CDD. They did just, they really have represented this neighborhood incredibly well, and I, I just wanted to, I know you all probably all know this, but I just wanted to add my thanks on that too. I want to thank St. Joe for stepping up and letting us express our priorities and then having them working with our staff, because honestly, this has been going on throughout the time, but especially yesterday, yesterday afternoon, today, all the way up to the meeting, and because of that, we're able to settle this tonight. And you all can go home and know that you are, the city's going to be doing whatever it can to make this, these solutions easier, and, and then, and the roads are going to be finished. So, thank you all.
Well, Mayor, I'm going to move option one with the change that Ms. Trumanville discussed on the Schoolhouse Road being built by 2014, and the deferral till 2018 of the proportionate share amounts.
We got a motion.
Second.
Commissioners, if I may, can I read into the record on the specific sections that need to be changed to accomplish that?
Yes.
The revised option would be to find the NOPC is not a substantial deviation, is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and approve the NOPC and the ADO with the revision to Exhibit F, page 23 of Attachment 1, to add the southern extension of Biltmore Road and the eastern extension of Schoolhouse Road to connect to Biltmore Road. A footnote number five should be added to note that this improvement shall be completed no later than December 31st of 2014. Amend Exhibit G, Schedule of Prorata Share Contributions, Phase 2A, page 25 of Attachment 1, to modify the dates of the required payments from 2013 to 2018 to 2018 to 2023.
Wow, I hope we all got that.
I'll second the, I'll second.
You will second a motion? Can I get, oh, go ahead.
In regard to the roadway, we're talking about completion dates.
That's correct, those are completion dates.
If I say ditto to everything that everybody else says, can I get a hand too?
Mayor.
All right, I'm just kidding.
Mayor, one point. I think that it's important to recognize that Schoolhouse Road isn't in the condition that Orange is, and so I'm hoping that you all will make an extra effort to get them out the door on their permitting so that they can actually meet this time.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, we got a motion in the second, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Thank you. Now, y'all realize, wait a minute. Y'all realize, y'all also realize that since we agreed to all this, we gotta, y'all gotta stay here for the rest of the meeting. Yeah.
I thought they were here on the sign ordinance, actually. You're just getting to the good part.
That's democracy in action.
Okay, we're going to wait a few minutes and let the.
Room clear?
The room clear?
Let Gil's family go home? Put a bald as a ruckus.
At least they didn't have signs.
He's got four votes right there.
All right. Get out of here. How are you looking on the next two or three years?
Carolyn is amazing.
Did I tell you guys that I've got anonymous notes in my notes? They're really threatening. They're really, how nice.
Okay. Next item.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, the next item, Item 17, is the first and only public hearing on Ordinance 12Z01, as a proposed, proposed approval of the Cortona Hills Plan Unit Development, and Mr. Cook advises me we have no speakers, it is here for adoption.
I'll move the item, Mayor.
Second.
Promptly moved in second, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Next item.
Item 18 is first and only public hearing on Ordinance 12Z03, its proposed additions of property to the local register of historic places, and amending the official zoning map from open space to open space with historic preservation overlay, also no speakers and for adoption.
Move the item.
Second.
Promptly moved in second, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Next item.
19 is Ordinance 12Z04, proposed additions to the local register of historic places, and changing the zoning map from central core to central core with historic preservation overlay. No speakers?
No speakers.
No speakers, motion?
Move the item.
First and only. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously.
Next item, Item 20, is a continuation of the first and only public hearing on Ordinance 12Z06, proposed amendments from an OR3 zoning district to general commercial. This matter was continued by the Planning Commission till its February 7th meeting, so we, we'll hear any public speakers?
No speakers.
But we have none, and with that, we'd recommend you continue the item to February 22nd.
It's continued. Next item.
Item 21 is similar, 12Z08, rezoning from single-family and two-family to urban residential R4, also continued by the Planning Commission, and so we would also recommend you continue that item till February 22nd.
It's continued. Next item.
Item 22 is Public Hearing on Ordinance Number 11014, as amended. It is an ordinance amending various provisions of the city's sign code, dealing with information panels, standards for, on historic property, spacing requirements for off-site advertising, prohibitions regarding city gateways, provision of signage on Star Metro Transit shelters, providing standards for electronic reader boards, providing for removal of abandoned sign structures, and providing for conflict severability and an effective date, and.
We do have several speakers on this item.
Linda Hudson can, what we'd like to do, as we did on the first item, is let Ms. Hudson go ahead and make a presentation, so we have the issues out there, and then we'll call the. Make a presentation, so we have the issues out there, and then we'll call the speakers.
All right, Linda.
Thank you, Mr. English, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Linda Hudson, Assistant City Attorney. We have before you tonight Ordinance Number 11014AA, revising the Tallahassee Sign Code. The Long Range Community Based Planning Target Issue Committee has reviewed the proposed ordinance on two occasions, and the ordinance was introduced on December 14th, 2011. The agenda item includes comments from Planning Commissioners, the Chamber of Commerce, the International Sign Association in Alexandria, Virginia, and several citizens. The Planning Department Staff Memorandum is Attachment 2 to the agenda, and it found the ordinance consistent with the comp plan. The Planning Commission, however, when it reviewed it on January 3rd, voted 3 to 2 to find it inconsistent with the comp plan due to the electronic reader board provisions. Staff asked the Long Range Committee to review the Planning Commission comments and to review the ordinance again to address those comments, and several changes were made by the Long Range Planning, excuse me, Target Issue Group, to the electronic reader board provisions. This ordinance creates new requirements for electronic reader boards. The proposed changes originate from an interim policy that was adopted by the former building official about a year ago as a pilot program. The interim policy set the minimum time for copy changes at three minutes. The Long Range Committee reduced that to eight seconds after considerable input from industry representatives and business owners who have purchased the signs. These owners have invested in this rather expensive technology, and they think it's effective in getting their messages to the public, and they want to take full advantage of the technology. The members of the public that have opined on this provision would prefer longer dwell times for the change of copy, mainly for aesthetic reasons. The Planning Commission found the sign code ordinance inconsistent with Policy 1.9.2 of the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. That policy states that the city must limit lighted and motion-activated sign usage. In response to the Planning Commission's decision, the Long Range Committee approved revisions to the proposed ordinance by adding a requirement that all electronic reader boards must meet the requirements currently in the sign code that govern permanent onsite signs. This section governs size, type, location, height, shopping center signs, subdivision signs, multifamily residential signs. In addition, it, the Long Range Committee suggested that the ordinance be revised to prohibit electronic reader boards in historic districts and in the bus shelters that would have advertising, and third, to establish brightness standards at the same level as is in the sign code currently for variable message boards. The Chamber of Commerce comments were mainly that the electronic reader boards on governmental buildings as well as private buildings be regulated in the same manner. The International Sign Association suggested only that the brightness of the reader boards be adjusted at night. That has, that was also a suggestion of the Long Range Committee, and that is in the revised ordinance. Mr. Rip Colleen's comments that are in the agenda item as Attachment 7, address mainly the aesthetic impact of electronic reader boards on the community. This ordinance provides regulations for electronic reader boards to fill a gap in the sign code. The signs are new technology and are replacing the static changeable copy signs that we have all over the community. The messages, even though the messages will change every eight seconds if this ordinance is approved, they will not be flashing messages, they will not be animated, they will not scroll. The, there is a minimum time of two seconds for the change to take place, and there's a default design required in case of malfunction. a default design required in case of malfunction. The, um, Planning Department is, as soon as a Federal Highway Administration study is completed on electronic reader boards, the Planning Department will, um, create a report on whether there are any safety issues related to these signs, and, uh, at that time bring it back to you. The, in the meantime, the ordinance will provide a regulatory framework where none exists now. The next section of the, uh, ordinance that I'm going to talk about is the proposed gateways and scenic roads. The ordinance, um, includes six gateways that are listed here on the board, and then three roads that are considered other scenic roads, Blairstone Road, Gaines Street, and Wilani Boulevard. Billboards would be prohibited on these roads, and if, if it's, if the ordinance is approved as written, twelve existing billboards will be made non-conforming. We've had no comments in opposition to this provision. As a matter of fact, I think you've received an email message from the Button Hills Homeowners Association, uh, applauding the designation of Thomasville Road, um, as a gateway. The Planning Commissioners had suggested adding additional gateways. The ones shown in blue on this map are the additional gateways. The, the portions of these suggested additions are outside of the city, are already in the ordinance, are designated by the county as gateways, or they're in highly commercialized portions of the city and have, uh, many billboards on them. The Long Range Committee did not recommend any additions to the six gateways and the three other scenic roads at this time. The next section that has drawn a lot of attention is the bus shelter advertising section, which is, uh, section seven dash sixty-six of the ordinance. This would approve the location of advertising on, uh, on certain, uh, bus shelters in the city, not all bus shelters. The location of shelters with advertising is very restricted in the ordinance, is limited to five commercial or industrial zoning districts that now permit billboards. The bus shelters with advertising would be prohibited in special character districts, historic preservation districts, the Gaines Street Revitalization Area, Canopy Roads, Blairstone Road, Wilani Boulevard, Famu Way, Famu Way Extension on the gateways, and, uh, within a hundred feet of any residentially zoned property. The advertising, and we have a mock-up of the bus shelter here. The, uh, advertising is limited to two panels on the end of the shelter. Each panel would be six by four feet. The ordinance requires a design to be approved by the city manager and incorporated into a policy at the Growth Management Department. The location, maintenance, and control of the advertising would be handled by Star Metro, and, uh, Star Metro already has policies in place, uh, to address the spacing of these shelters, and, uh, will also have contracts with, uh, vendors. Uh, another section, um, and the, the sections that I'll mention now have not, uh, had a lot of public attention, but, uh, the city has issued permits for billboards on local roads near major intersections that give the appearance of having the billboard on the major road instead of the local road. And it, it results in the appearance of, uh, violation of the spacing requirements. So, this provision is intended to make it clear that billboards cannot be located on local roads, and that billboards at intersections must be oriented toward the road on which it is permitted. The proposed ordinance does clearly indicate that billboards cannot be located on local roads. There's another provision that provides expanded signage opportunities for businesses located on Clayman Plaza. The current sign code, uh, allows businesses to have signage per, uh, linear foot of frontage on public streets. The businesses on Clayman Plaza do not have frontage on public streets. They have frontage on the plaza, which is owned by the city. This provision in the ordinance would treat public, the frontage on Clayman Plaza as public street frontage, and would give the, uh, businesses, uh, expanded signage opportunities. Currently, they have to usually go to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals and get a variance in order to get their signage. The signage would still be controlled and reviewed by the Clayman Plaza Design Review Board, uh, and the owners and the tenants on Clayman Plaza, uh, are supporting this change. And the, the, in the meantime, as you may have seen in the paper this morning, the development of the wayfinding signs, uh, continues. We have another, uh, provision that creates a new type of sign, uh, called a city information panel. These signs would be installed by the city on public property, uh, and would provide information to people needing to find, uh, their way. The signs could be static, electronic, or, or interactive, and if they are electronic or interactive, they would have to meet the same requirements that the electronic reader boards meet. There's a provision that gives the Architectural Review Board the approval authority for signage on historic structures. There's a provision, this provision got some attention also. It clarifies the authority of the building official to order the removal of abandoned sign structures. The code currently gives the building official the right to order the removal of abandoned signs after six months. The sign is considered to be the portion of the structure where the copy is. So the structures tend to remain, um, for years and years, and the, uh, we had several citizens' complaints, so the, uh, former building official requests that this provision be clarified. Originally, we proposed, um, I think, the same timeframe for signs. That has now, due to the concerns voiced by the Chamber of Commerce and other business owners, that has been extended, uh, at the direction of the Long Range Committee to twenty-four months. The, that is the, well, there's one, one more. Small onsite signs. Prior to two thousand and three, when the code was redone, uh, there was an exemption for onsite signs under twenty-four square feet. The building official reports no problems with that provision, but in the two thousand and three codification, it was inadvertently changed to say one sign instead of any sign. So, uh, now, these small signs that we see on convenience stores, or this, this one is an example from Clayman Plaza, uh, they have to get permits, and it results in a lot of staff time and resources, and the, since the staff never had a problem, the square footage is included in the total square footage for the signage, for the premises, so it would not result in an overproliferation of signs on any site. And that is the, uh, ordinance in a nutshell. Big nutshell. But a lot of changes.
I was a coconut.
Been a long time coming. The commission, I, the commission options are laid out in the agenda item, um, and the recommended option is to approve the ordinance, uh, as amended, and find it consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Commissioner?
Yeah. With regard to the, uh, bus signage, I mean, there are a lot of, um, a lot of areas that are exempt from, uh, from advertising at the bus stops, uh, which left me wondering what is included, and I would hate for any section of our city to become littered with these things, that they ought to be properly sort of saturated if we're gonna allow it at all. And so part of me thinks that we may wanna have a condition by which this list gets approved by the City Commission, or, um, uh, the whole carte blanche thing, I'm a little, I have some concern about, because I would hate to look up, and we see that all of the advertisement is around the university campus, or, uh, in one segment of the city, and not, uh, and only one segment of the city basically shares the burden of that, of, of, of that, what could be blight. So, uh, can we, you all put your heads together and give some thought, uh, to some suggestion you can make around how we guarantee the approval process of that?
Yes.
Why don't we go, if we can, go ahead and, Commissioner, were you through?
Yes.
Why don't we go ahead and take public speakers, and, and while they're speaking, maybe, uh, Mr. Garrison and Linda can come back with something.
Okay, you know what? Let's, let's do the speakers now. Okay?
We've got a number of speakers, Mayor. The first is Ann Biddlingmeyer. She'll be followed by Rip Colleen.
Okay. Ms. Biddlingmeyer.
Good evening. Ann Biddlingmeyer, nineteen twenty, Harriet Drive, three two three oh three. Back in the eighties, I was appointed to the very first sign ordinance committee by Mayor Inman Cruz, and I have sat through a whole lot of public hearings about trees and landscaping issues and stormwater, but I was totally unprepared for what happened at this sign ordinance public hearing, and it was really pretty vicious. So I would like to encourage you all not to back down, not to loosen your standards, but we've got some pretty good improvements here. Of course, we can always do a little bit more, but, but please don't loosen up anything, 'cause you're probably gonna, gonna hear, um, from some people who want, want carte blanche on this. Commissioner Lightsey and I went out to Carmel by the Sea, uh, one, one summer, and we were just astounded at how beautiful the city was, and what made it so unusually Eden-like? And she figured out it was because of their sign controls. There are no freestanding signs, no electronic signs. Everything is on the building. And of course, the mayor of Carmel by the Sea is Clint Eastwood. So we were thinking, well, maybe he just told signmakers to get off his lawn. And it was really an amazing, amazing experience to be out there. One of the, um, issues that we have are the electronic reader boards, and we're concerned about texting in traffic, and I almost think that these reader boards going off are much like the texting experience, and I would ask that maybe we come back and tweak that at some point. I think we can, um, probably make some improvements, but I would really like to see businesses have their street numbers posted on the front, because it's hard to find a lot of them without the street numbers being there, so I think that's one thing we can go forward with. I remembered when I taught school that I taught a short story called "The Subliminal Man" by J.G. Ballard, so I pulled it up off the net, and the first phrase in the story is, "The signs, doctor, have you seen the signs?" So I thought for your optional reading assignment at your leisure, I would give you a copy of this, and you can pull it up off the web, and it, and makes a pretty good commentary about what our mentality is about signs and advertising, and how much of it is necessary. So keep up the good work, and, you know, hang in there. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you. Thank you. It's to Colleen, I think.
Next speaker is Rip Colleen, followed by Joseph Mueller.
Good evening. My name is Rip Colleen, thirty forty-eight Godfrey Place, Tallahassee. Raised our family here, lived here forty years. No economic interest, just, uh, a concern about what's happened over time to the beauty of the city and looking into the future. There are two provisions which, uh, are going to allow two whole new categories of roadside signage here. And it's important, because those are permanent changes. And you all know what happens with billboards. Once they're up, you can't get them down. We waited a long time before we capped billboards, and as a result, we have, you know, more billboards per capita than a lot of counties, a lot of cities. This ordinance in front of you has some good provisions, particularly the gateway, the gateway road protections, which the county led the way on three years ago. But the two I just wanna hit quickly, is the advertising on bus shelters. I understand the commitment to mass transit. I know you subsidize the system. I know money is scarce, and three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars, uh, saved by allowing an advertising vendor to construct up to thirty shelters and maintain the shelters is a swap that you folks may decide to do. I think it's, uh, gonna not have a good effect on the visual look of the city. Many, many places don't allow advertising on shelters. We never have. Our shelters are beautiful. They're quality, they're well-maintained, and now, for the first time, you're allowing , uh, commercial advertising on them. Remember, they're in a right-of-way, they're closer to passing vehicles than any other advertising signs. They're in a place where no other signs are allowed to be, uh, be placed. No advertising signs can be placed in that right-of-way, except the ones you're authorizing here in exchange for this compensation. If you all agree to do, decide to do that, at least put the limits that you're being told are going along with this, insert them in this ordinance provision. So up to thirty billboards, I mean, sorry, up to thirty new shelters, uh, constructed and maintained at no cost to the city. That means there's no retrofitting and putting ads on shelters the city has put up, and there's hundreds of those. And it makes sure that what was intended to be a limited approval doesn't expand to a limitless one. Okay, let me focus in on, uh, electronic reader boards.
Quickly, sir, we're running...
Okay.
Excuse me, your time has expired.
Time's up.
Next speaker is Joseph Mueller, representing Go Clean Car Wash, followed by Howard Madison.
Thank you. I've never heard anybody arguing about the signs, and this really seems, you know, I'm just a manager of a car wash, but it just seems like it's very business-unfriendly. I mean, these signs, I don't know that you think they're a distraction or whatever, but, you know, people that are gonna be distracted by these signs are gonna be distracted by virtually anything. I mean, I'm not a public speaker, and I will say that I'm Joe Mueller Jr., 'cause my dad's gonna want me to clarify that. The owners of my company, they're very giving people, and we put a lot of things on that sign that are local interest. We have a project payback that gives restitution to minors that are serving out, you know, sentences that part of their sentences, they have to rest, you know, give restitution to the victims. We advertise for that. It's a two-way street. They've given back almost twenty thousand dollars to this community, and I put on the advertising. They don't ask me to. We do things for veterans. We make sure that we put things about that. My reader board is not that large. We can only put so many words on that reader board at any given time, and a lot of these things tie in from one message to the next, to the next. Like, right now, I've got one that says, "Thank you, Tallahassee," one board. The next one, "For making project payback," one board. "Successful, keep it going," one board. "Over nineteen thousand dollars collected." Now, if I do eight seconds, which you can go by that car wash on Capital Circle Northeast, I've said it at eight seconds. It's ridiculous. Now, if I had a paragraph up there, and like she said, texting or something, I could understand people being, you know, they're reading, 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 but I put three, four words up at a time? Three seconds makes sense when you're doing that. If I put a paragraph up there, eight seconds is okay. But when you go by my car wash, and all you see the entire drive is "Making project payback", I mean, hold your breath for eight seconds. That's, you know, that gives you an indication of how long that eight seconds is. I mean...
Yes, sir.
We're not making that mandatory, are we? Does this ordinance make it mandatory that it be eight seconds?
It said eight seconds.
Minimum.
No quicker.
I thought that was a minimum.
It is.
Okay.
That's why Dad didn't want me to...
You want it quicker?
I want it to be three seconds. That's what I've always had.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
The three seconds for the, you know, when you've got those lines that tie into each other, and I have other items, we don't just put, "Come get your Red Bull," you know, "Two for four dollars..." "Two for $4," whatever. I'm putting things that tie into each other. And the bottom line is, is, you know, these people that are distracted by a bright light or that, just like she said, texting. We've got laws out there. Pay attention to the road. You need to be pulling driver's license.
Excuse me, your time's expired.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Howard Madison, followed by Brian Rowe.
My name is Howard Madison, 2126 Golden Eagle Drive West, Tallahassee. I own two shopping centers here in town on Capital Circle Northeast. And I'm here tonight just to express my concerns with the regulations putting on the signs. Signage is often a deal-maker or a deal-breaker as I deal with my prospective tenants. Once they do decide to come in, the signs keep them in business and if they don't have proper signage, they fail. And right now, I'm stressed with vacancies. And with my vacancies up, I would like to consider putting an electronic board in to bring in new tenants and help the existing businesses that are struggling. And as my business struggles, property value goes down because the value of my property is based on occupancy. And so my property taxes are reduced and also the sales tax I collect from the tenants is greatly reduced. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Brian Rowe, representing Piggy's Barbecue, followed by Greg Porter.
Brian Rowe, 4623 Forest Ridge Drive. When I opened my restaurant two and a half years ago and I was looking at my budget for how I wanted to spend my money, I allocated $50,000 for my sign. I didn't allocate money to advertise the Democrat, WCTV, any other places of traditional advertising. I knew that my best bet for advertising was that board. Since then, that board, which you may or may not have seen, I'm very proud of. We took second place nationally in a sign contest. It wasn't just stitched together. It was well-thought-out. I can't tell you the amount of people that come into my restaurant and say, you know, "I would never have known about you unless I would have seen something on your board." I have a kids' club, kids' birthday club, okay? You're under 12 years old and it's your birthday. Your picture with your name, "Happy Birthday Fred," is on my board. Kids love it. Get an absolute kick out of that. We are very family-friendly. We do fundraisers. Those items get up there. I also do advertising specials, but it's, it's, you know, it's not just there for the business owner to make a buck, okay? It is, you know, I'm a local guy. You know, we are trying to help other local organizations with messages that we put up there. I know the ordinance is calling for eight-second minimum. The larger boards have six seconds. I'd like to see six seconds. I have no problem with the no flash and the no video and whatnot, but being able to put that message up there, if it's longer, like the gentleman said, if it's longer and you have two messages that are tied together, you drive by Capital Circle, if you have it on eight seconds, you are not going to see more than one message. Thank you.
Next speaker is Greg Porter, representing Superloop, followed by James Carpenter.
I represent Superloop and also Auto Super Service Center and Super Splash Car Wash. Altogether, we have 24 locations and roughly 200 employees. We support the code as it is. Eight seconds, you know, I think is fair. And we're actually ordering digital signs now. And we're very excited to be able to promote products on there. And having a digital board allows us to display products that maybe our customers didn't know about, you know, so we can drive sales and try to, you know, increase employment and taxes for you guys. That's all I'd say. Thanks.
Not for, not for us, for the community.
For the community.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Everybody.
Taxes for everybody, okay.
James Carpenter with the International Sign Association. And then the next speaker will be Trevor Screws.
Thank you, James Carpenter here. And I'm here to speak generally in support of the ordinance. The, we appreciate the inclusion of some of the illumination standards and we think that the illumination standards for electronic signs is really one of the biggest issues. And with that properly addressed, the other items were, that are being talked about by some of the business community as far as the change rate, I mean, what that has an impact on is exactly what they're talking about. Fiscal impact, which is a part of the review by the attorney's office, is the fiscal impact of these regulations is huge. If you have a shorter change rate, it's better for the business community. If you have a longer change rate, like eight seconds, it's not as favorable. Will it work? Yeah, it will work better for the business community if it's a little shorter. And just as an example, the, most states, including Florida, allow less than eight seconds when you're driving down the freeway or the highways and you see one of those electronic signs on the side, their, their change rate is typically about half of that. And would they be doing that if it wasn't safe? Absolutely not. So it's something to consider. And generally, I'd just like to comment too, I'd like to suggest down the road, once you go through like the historic district and some other parts where you have some administrative processes that might be a little lengthy, consider streamlining because that's really what a lot of communities are doing in many aspects of land use regulation, is streamlining. So when you look at the change rate down the road, when the safety issue comes out, safety study that you're looking at, and you'll, either now or maybe then, you'll decrease the change rate because it's going to show that there aren't really any safety issues. That's based on studies that I've seen. I think you should look at that aspect too, seriously. So that is all the comments I had. Thank you very much. And would, can I just ask a question? I know I'm probably not supposed to address it. Are you guys going to vote on this tonight or?
Yep.
You are? Okay. I, I know I'm probably not supposed to do that, but I appreciate the answer. Thank you.
It's a tough one. Next is Trevor Screws, followed by Bruce Screws.
Good evening. I'd like to talk to you about perspective.
Name and address, sir.
I apologize. My name is Trevor Screws. I live at 2731 Teton Trail, 32303. I'd like to talk to you about perspective. Each individual has their own experiences and innate leanings that affect their perspective. And how does perspective relate to tonight's topic? Well, the lens that guides my views is freedom. Freedom means that you can make your own decisions about how you manage your life and your property. My premise is that since our country was founded on the basis of freedom, personal responsibility, and a sense of community, the decisions regarding one's personal property should be left to the individual. I recognize that there are counterarguments to my premise. However, I want to offer a solution to what some people consider a problem: signs. Personally, I have a lot of respect for somebody who holds strong opinions regarding their community, even if that person has a dissenting opinion. In this case, the dissenting opinion is that signs would have increased regulation for what seems like purely aesthetic reasons. I commend you for trying to beautify your community, but through the perspective of freedom, not everything other people do is going to make you happy. Unfortunately, that's just a fact of life. I want to give you an example of how self-regulation has succeeded in the private sector. If you look at certain, excuse me, shopping centers, they have certain standards that they require their tenants to maintain. If they don't maintain those standards, then the property owner will not allow them to put up their sign. This is an example of how it's been successful in the private sector. Now that I feel I have defined the problem to the perspective of freedom, I'd like to offer a solution. If you don't care for how a property looks, start a Facebook group, find other people who share your interests, and I suggest you boycott the store. Get enough people together and let them know how you feel, and that will change the problem. But that's through a free-market solution as opposed to a governmental imposed coercive solution. So simply put, it's not fair for every business to have to comply with these new regulations when only a handful of bad apples are the culprits. Fundamentally, this is what our country and our community are founded upon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Bruce Screws, will be followed by Doug McLeod.
Boy, you talk about a hard act to follow. Bruce Screws, I also reside at 2731 Teton Trail. And Mayor and fellow commissioners, thank you for having us here. The first issue, and there's about 12, and I know just the attorney reading took more than three minutes, so there's no way that any one person is going to be able to address all 12 issues. So we're, I just kind of limit it to as much as I can get in three minutes. Abandon signs. Being in the sign business, if I just sat down, I'd probably make more money taking people's signs down and putting them up. Please do not require businesses and/or property owners to remove their safe signs without compensation. Government requiring citizens to remove any of their safe property without compensation goes against our basic human and citizen's property rights. If you insist, start with the city's signs structures first. Lead by example. For instance, your former utilities collection facilities located at the old Barnett Bank Building on North Monroe and the one located at Mark Luther King Boulevard and Madison across from the Civic Center still have structures remaining. The, you know, the facilities are closed, the signs are still up. Lead by example. The sign, the sign structure at MLK is a brick monument structure. It doesn't look like a sign, but it does. If you're required the entire structure to be removed, including securing the electric wiring, why stop at sign structures? Why not parking lot poles, utility poles, overhead wiring, and even fences? If you insist on proceeding with removing your comrade's private property, then at least consider if the property is under foreclosure or bankruptcy proceedings or being actively marketed and a host of other exceptions. Consider if the buildings, the property buildings are being, consider if the property buildings are being demolished like at Monroe in Tennessee and you want to take the signs down at that time, that might be a good time to take signs down when the entire building's gone and there's no future plans, immediate plans to replace it. And you're going to take the buildings down, consider taking the signs down. But if you do, consider having an inventory of the existing signs and then give the property owners basically sign credits to equal the signs that come down. Two issues tend to go, anyway. Taking property without compensation is just plain wrong. Lead by example, the city airport, city recreation department, public libraries, and other election officers all use EMCs. They place them next to the roadways and whole, and whole times apparently are not considered.
Excuse me, your time has expired.
Go ahead.
Doug McLeod does not wish to speak, but...
Commissioner?
... in favor of the...
We have discussed the issue of when to take signs down based on some of the feedback that we got. And I, if Linda's here, I would like to know what happened to that because we discussed taking, the sign needs to come down when the building's demolished and that if a piece of property is being marketed, is being kept up, that that didn't, the signs didn't have to come down, especially if the property was for sale. So could you clarify where that went in the ordinance?
There is a provision that was added that if the property is demolished, then the sign structure should also be demolished unless there's an approved site plan already in place and they're going to use the sign.
Okay. And also, if the building's still there and it's being marketed, like the city's property, for example, and anyone, any piece of private property where the property's on the market, it's actively being marketed, those people don't have to take their sign down either. That was my understanding. Is that right?
The property has to be abandoned. So if it's being actively marketed, if the utilities are in place, it would not be abandoned.
Okay. Thank you.
Hope that clarifies some things.
Does that clarify some things?
No, but we still have a, in this ordinance, it still requires after 24 months...
Two years.
... of in occupancy, the sign would have to come down.
Right.
And have you all assessed the, the fact that this is on private property and whether or not it's considered part of the edifice or the real estate of the business? The sign itself? Does that make sense?
I didn't understand.
So if, if the sign is on private property where the business is, and even after 24 months of in occupancy, if we then required the sign be taken down, have we, have we looked at the legality of whether or not that's considered legal property? Or is, is it, quite frankly, legal for us to require the sign be taken down if it's a part of the edifice or, or the property?
Right. I mean, we're, I'm very comfortable that we can do that. It's not a taking, they can keep the sign, the sign company can take it back. It just has to be removed from the property, so.
I don't understand.
The structure can be retained by the owner and stored or sold or whatever.
So even on a, I mean, but the owner is selling the business, so the business is there and you have a sign that accompanies the business. We are requiring that at the 24-month period, if the building is unoccupied, that the sign has to be demolished?
Well, for one thing, we have to keep in mind that the enforcement of this is complaint-driven, just as the rest of our code is. If we get a complaint...
Right. I guess I'm asking for the rationale then.
Beg your pardon?
The rationale and the legal basis for doing that.
For taking.
For requiring the removal of the sign.
If the sign is in ill-repair and has not been maintained...
Right. But, so that's the same would be true if a building was in disrepair and was a safety hazard?
Yes.
It's a code enforcement issue. All right.
So is it possible, particularly with that piece, because I am a little concerned about that, if, if we could treat that as real property, the sign itself as real property, I don't want to go beyond what the limits of the law would, would require there by forcing a takedown of a sign. Do you understand the concern?
I think he's talking about whether or not we have the authority to, I believe.
Yeah, force the removal of a sign.
Is it a taking?
Yeah, no, I...
A legal taking.
Clearly have the authority and if it's a rationally-based...
I'm not, can you start over? I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part.
We clearly have the authority. It's a regulatory provision. It would not be considered a taking.
To require the sign be removed is not considered a taking.
Yes, under the conditions that we described, right.
And the conditions that we described is abandonment up to 24 months, at the 24-month mark?
Correct.
Okay. I still have some discomfort with that because I'm not, I'm not all the way clear around the reasoning for it.
Well, it's primarily aesthetics. And there's several sites around town. The one I probably complained about is Monroe in Tennessee. The, actually, there's two signs on that intersection where the faces are gone, the structures are there. You know, that's a significant intersection. I just, it is very, very unpleasant to see that. We had hopes for one of those sites to be redeveloped. That sign would have been removed, but we just think it should come down.
Gotcha. Just a clarification.
If there's a valid reason to do it.
Mm-hmm. Tenant moves out or the owner moves out, but the building is being maintained as in utilities are on. And the property's being marketed. After 24 months, what happens?
We would not consider it abandoned.
Okay.
Unless no marketing, it's been vacant for 24 months.
Okay. So using the BP, because it was BP, at Tennessee Street in North Monroe, there are two signs on the property that are clearly in disrepair. The, the panels have been removed, but there is a for-sale sign on that property, but the building's been demolished. What happens there?
Well, under the proposed ordinance, when the building was demolished, the sign structure should have been taken down.
Okay, but in this particular case now, we have a building that's already been demolished.
Right.
But the property is being marketed. What happens with those signs?
Under the current ordinance, they would have to be taken down.
Right.
If the building were demolished, if the ordinance were passed...
Okay.
And those buildings were demolished, the sign structure would be demolished also.
Okay.
And it should be demolished.
That makes, I mean, that part makes sense to me. I'm, I'm trying to figure out the application of the law under circumstance where the edifice is still standing and maybe still being kept up. Okay, let's assume for the sake of argument, it is being kept up. And you have a sign on the site because if, if, if the property is still being kept up and it's being advertised for sale, we could assume that whatever comes in to replace it may also have the same need or use for that sign. Or else you might demolish the building and just sell the land or some other scenario. You understand what I'm saying? I mean, if, if we treat it as part of the real property, as it's being advertised for sale, I'm sure somebody's also pitching the fact that... I'm sure somebody's also pitching the fact that it has a sign, and if we, you know, if we require the sign be taken down only because it doesn't look right, you know, I have a, I've got a problem with that if we, you know, if it's an active advertisement for sale. I get the first scenario where you have a building that's been taken down, because now, well, why would you still have a sign there? I think it, you know, makes sense to have that removed. I'm just a little concerned about the application of that part of the law, but we can, we can move on from there.
Well, it wouldn't come down, it wouldn't have to come down if they were actively marketing it and.
Well, at the 24-month period, it would regardless.
It would not.
Because, can you clarify whether or not that's right?
If, if the property is being actively marketed and the, and the utilities are still on and the sign is being maintained, it would not be considered abandoned. So the time period would not be triggered.
Right. Okay, I'll look at that.
I think, I think what the gentleman, another gentleman was getting to is whether or not it was a legal taking under the Constitution. I think that's what he was trying to figure out.
And we don't consider that it would be.
That it would be an illegal.
Taking, it would not be an illegal taking.
Taking under the Fifth Amendment, that's what we're talking, I think that's what he's talking about.
Well, I wasn't necessarily into the Constitution, I'm interested in the.
Think this gentleman was talking about that.
Common sense of it, which is, you know, the selling of a property and a sign being a part of it.
Yeah.
And the part that I don't yet get, but I'll ask just offline here in a moment, is what constitutes sort of inactive usage?
Okay.
Which, if it's not an electronic sign and it's just the post, if you're not advertising a business, I assume that's inactive use.
Yeah.
Or an inactive, yeah.
And there are, there are some pictures in the agenda item of some of these structures that are the target of this ordinance.
But, but again, I think this gentleman was talking about something.
I understand, right, yeah, sure.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
And Commissioner, Mayor, if I could address part of Mr. Gillum's concern, we can, if you want some reporting back on the, on the impact of this provision, after six months, something like that, we can, we can do that and let you know what issues we're running into or impacts it's having.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. Now, the two examples that you have here, there was an edifice here, a building here, it's no longer here. I get that, I get why you would want the sign taken down in that case. There is, I guess, attachment number 12, I'm not sure exactly what that is or where that is, but that would be inactive if we're talking about we're at the 24-month mark, it's not being advertised for sale, is that the case? An example, attachment 12?
That's Monroe in Tennessee, also.
That's what, what'd you say?
That's Monroe in Tennessee, attachment 12.
Right, but the circumstance around this building, do we know or not? Is this just?
I don't.
For picture's sake, okay.
Let's call the next speaker so we can, I know people are waiting, and we need to talk to, sit here the next speaker. Go ahead.
Next speaker was Doug McLeod, who does not wish to speak, but is, oh, you, you have three minutes.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. My name's Doug McLeod, 2920 Abbotsford Way, 32312. I'm obviously in the sign business, and just to touch on the abandoned structures, take for example, the old Ramada Inn. You can't just take that, that sign pole that was probably $60,000, $70,000 and store it somewhere, you know? The cabinet at the top possibly could be reused, possibly not, but I think if I was that hotel owner and I was trying to sell that property, one of my big selling points would be the fact that I've got a $60,000 or $70,000 pole that would probably withstand current wind loads and be engineered so it could be reused and save you money on that. The other issue at hand is the, the digital boards being changed to the eight seconds. I do think that that's a fair amount of time. Obviously, we would like it to be equivalent to that of the billboards at six seconds. I see no reason why there would be any differentiation, billboards being 10 by 24, you know, as far as size-wise, and then you have your average four by eight, five by eight digital board. And on the fact of safety, the Federal Highway Safety has put out reports that these are not unsafe, they would not put boards over Monroe Street to, you know, alert on amber alerts, they would not put them on the side of the interstates when they're doing construction, that lanes are merging and whatnot, if there was a safety issue at hand. It's definitely a fiscal issue, and that is that the people who spend the $30,000, $40,000, $50,000 for these signs can all attest to the fact that when these signs are up and operating correctly, they are drawing business in. I have clients that call me the minute their signs go down and say that we've got a big sale this weekend and without that sign, we have just wasted advertising, we're not going to do the sales that we typically would do. And they have records that generate over and over again that the fact that people come in because that sign is letting them know that a sale on Lazy Boys is this weekend or a barbecue sandwich, whatever it might be, at a reduced price. So I think if we can look at the issue maybe a year down the road and possibly equate it to the six-second rule with the digital, with the billboards, I think that would be a fair, fair assessment, and that's what I'm asking, is that you all go ahead and, you know, accept the proposed changes to the code, we can address it a year from now if we want it to speed up or not, but I just wanted to clarify that safety is not an issue. It has been looked at and by the federal government as well as the state and local municipalities, and it's, it's not an issue, so we appreciate your thoughts, thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mayor, is Mark Fulmer, to be followed by Mark Brown.
Hi, I'm Mark Fulmer, I live at 1212 Mimosa Drive. I own Fulmers right on Monroe Street, I do have an electronic billboard, and I have 11 employees. A good portion of their salary is derived from the money that I make off of that electronic sign. I think in many ways, when you try to push issues that are aesthetics, it's real hard to decide who's right and who's wrong. Your opinion and mine can differ, but neither one of us are right or wrong. It's kind of like the old saying goes where ugly people get married and bad land sell, it's strictly a difference of opinion. So I kind of lean towards safety being your standard, because it's the one thing that you can have professionals, if, if professionals say that two seconds is too quick or that eight seconds is too long, we at least have a professional's opinion, not just an opinion like everyone here has. And when you're dealing with things that make people a profit and employ people, the more you restrict, the more you hurt their ability to provide for their employees and to increase business in Tallahassee. Tallahassee has always been somewhat, it has seemed to be, unfriendly towards business. And when people talk about other places that have these wonderful places where you don't see any signs, I just wonder what those people do for a living. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mark Brown for the Hourglass, followed by Gerald Wayne Funderburke.
Good evening, my name is Mark Brown, 244 Timber Lane Road, 32312. I represent the Hourglass, we're a locally-owned company, been in business over 25 years. We are a mom-and-pop optical company that's done exceptionally well, we're in the top 30 in the United States of optical retailers in Tallahassee, Florida. We employ over 100 local people. I've lived here my entire life, went to Gilchrist Elementary, Rah Middle and Leon High School, grew up in the same neighborhood as Commissioner Mushton. I love Tallahassee, I want it to be beautiful. I love everything about this city, and I appreciate what you guys do to protect it. We have a sign at our location on Lafayette Street across from the Governor's Square Mall. We moved over there partly because of the, the sign that existed. We put the digital sign in and it increased our business significantly. Part of the reason why is the messages we're, we're able to put through there, but they're single messages, we can't put a big message on there, we can't put a lot and then leave it there for a long period of time. We have a lot of information that has to get through. We take several hundred vision insurances, we have to allow people to know what we take. That's part of the way that we get the message out to the community. A ton of people drive up and down Applex Parkway every day, and we need to reach out to those people. I can tell you in a year's time, I have not seen one car accident in front of our building. I do not believe that we've been responsible for anybody getting hurt, I wouldn't want that to happen, but we have to be able to compete, and we feel like that sign has made a tremendous difference. The more it's regulated, the less we're able to use it, the $28,000 that we spent for that sign goes out the window. You decrease our ability to use that sign, you decrease our ability to reach out to the consumer in Tallahassee, and like the gentleman spoke before me, we suddenly have an issue with employing local folks. We're not going to be able to compete, we're not going to stay in the top 30 in the United States of optical retailers, which we're very proud of. Thank you.
Next, Gerald Wayne Funderburke, representing Bill's Signs, he'll be followed by Dr. Irwin Jackson.
Gerald Wayne Funderburke, 11328 White House Road, Tallahassee, Florida. I should clarify, I'm speaking on Wayne Funderburke's behalf, my owner over there has not approved anything I say. I do want to clarify one thing, I did not intend to speak on abandoned signs, but the code proposed says, "Any onsite sign structure that is located on property which is unoccupied for a period of 24 months or more shall be deemed to have been abandoned. Any abandoned sign on site or sign structure is prohibited and shall be taken down and removed by the owner, agency, or persons having beneficial use of the building, structure, or land use, so on and so forth." So according to code, after 24 months of this property being unoccupied, it can and says it shall be removed at the owner's expense. And the example for Ramada Inn is quite easily, that's a, could easily be a $150,000 structure and an expense that place can't rent the place, they certainly don't want to have that expense tied on to it. Electronic message centers, our thing is businesses do not need more regulation. As President Obama said last night, he called for less regulation several times for businesses. In these economic times, it is tough enough as is. Some messages require more than one screen to deliver the message, and that's the issue with the eight seconds. If you've got an electronic billboard, it works great for six seconds. They got a 10 by 24 space up there, they can put their entire message in that space. Current sign code only allows you so much code, I mean, so much sign. You may only be allowed a 24-square-foot electronic message board based on the other sign requirements you have. If it's only 24 square feet, you can only put so much more on that message, and the screen time, if you have it at eight seconds, if they got three screens, the message would not be seen. All business owners have attested to the need to advertise their business, and really and truly, I think the, it should be like a two-second space. Eight seconds is, is, is long. And don't get me wrong, we love it, eight seconds is better than three minutes what they started at, but really and truly, we say let the message dictate the wait time. Thank you.
Next is Irwin Jackson, followed by Bonnie Giddens.
I certainly didn't plan on talking about this, but I think Commissioner Gillum is absolutely correct. I'm sitting out here thinking, heck, I've got three buildings, I've got this sign, I wonder if any, the buildings are in great shape, what do I have to do about my sign? And, and let's just take a second, I'm always opposed to government taking personal property. Your situation, what you talked about, you said, well, you don't feel good about it. I think I'm in that situation, I don't feel good about it either. So why do we have to vote and push this thing in tonight? Why can't citizens say, well, we'll come back after we create havoc for this community and we'll talk about next year? Let's postpone this thing, get an answer, Commissioner Gillum, to your question before we pass it, because as a person who's sitting here, I have a building, we have a sign, my understanding in law, and I'm certainly no attorney, if it's attached to that property, if I buy it, it comes with that property, and if you take it away, the reason you want me to take it is because I'd probably call the cops if the city came out and tried to take it. We need to focus on the sign, what ugly, what, what's the problem with the sign? If there is a problem with the sign, then let's fix the darn thing. Thank, thank you very much. There's no hurry in postponing this for two weeks, and get yourself the answer, and we'd love to hear the answer.
Next speaker is Bonnie Giddens, and as far as I can tell, Mayor, that'll be the last speaker on this item.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Giddens.
You gotta get to the mic.
I'm Bonnie Giddens and 1118 High Road, and listening to you, what I was wondering is, my understanding is that when you pay property tax, that property is your property, and when, if that sign is on your property, why does it matter if utilities are maintained? If the sign is intact and in no danger to anyone else, why should it be removed? And also, I would like to reiterate what Mr. Funderburke said, that I think that we should follow President Obama's lead in having fewer regulations, because fewer regulations is pro-business, and the better businesses are in our city, the better it will be for future generations and for everyone, especially during this economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Wow, the hands go up all the way down. Let's, can we start at the far end and come back this way? Commissioner Ziffer?
I, I do, this abandoned signs part, this is, there's a lot on this, and the abandoned signs one, I, I don't, I don't feel good about a couple of parts of it, the Ramada Inn sign has bothered me, and that's just an example, because that is a substantial structure, and from a aesthetic standpoint, you can't see the thing because it's so darn high, you don't see it anyways. So I almost feel like if we could pull the abandoned signs part out of this for just a little more evaluation, I don't have a problem with that. The rest of it, I just have a couple of, a couple of.
Wait, why don't we handle.
Questions.
Right here, Commissioner.
The change rates, I would think, the change rates, and I'm not trying to complicate this, to degrees depended upon the speed limit. In other words, if you're at 45 miles an hour, eight seconds is probably not enough time. If you're at 35 miles an hour, eight seconds probably is enough time, and I, I don't want to get overcomplicated, but I think speed limit does, kind of like what we do with our lights, quite frankly, our yellow lights on turn signals, you know, they're shorter when you come to the intersection because you're supposed to be going a lower speed limit. So I'm not sure if that should be something we should look at, but it seems to me if you're going 45, maybe six seconds is appropriate, if you're going less, maybe eight seconds is appropriate. And this is one other thing, and it's not part of our sign, what we're talking about tonight, but I got to tell you, there is a proliferation of illegal signs out there that are scattered on every roadway, these, you know, real estate, they're not realist, promoting real estate, but they are promoting something where people have just put them up, they have not been approved, they are temporary signs, and we don't have anybody taking them down, and I know that's an expense, but you want to talk about clutter? There's clutter all over our community that are illegal signs, that, I don't know who should take them down, but we know they're illegal, and I almost feel like I feel compelled, if I see them, I'd like to take them down, but I'm not going to, because I shouldn't do it. But I think we've all seen them, they're everywhere, and because nobody's taking them down, that's the real clutter. So my, my comments are, I'd like to probably have more discussion about the abandoned signs, I am curious about the change rates with different speed limits, and I'd like to enforce the laws we have, and those temporary signs need to come down.
Commissioner?
Well, first of all, I appreciate the fact that you all have come out to talk to us tonight, and it's been a really good conversation, it's caused us to have some things to talk about. I do agree that the way the code reads right now, it doesn't make it clear, it says just unoccupied, so.
Yes, and we can tie it back to the definition of abandoned structures if we.
Just somewhere else. Anyway, there's that. I want everybody to kind of understand the perspective here, the planning commission held this up because they wanted the dwell time on these electronic signs to be, to be 24 hours. When it was put into effect as an interim, it was three minutes, and as the attorney said, it was universally ignored. The discussion, it came to us in long-range planning at 15 or 30 seconds, I'm not even sure.
I think it was 60.
Okay, 60. It's come down to eight, and that was based on sign company information that the industry standard was from six to eight seconds. That number isn't something that we just drew out of the air, that came from your industry, and that is really the reason, that's how we got to the point where we were putting this in. There is a tremendous amount of concern in the community that these things are distracting and are dangerous. I've heard both stories, the site, that they, studies have shown that they're not, and studies have shown that. studies have shown that they are. So what we put, what we want to do is have our own staff go and do a literature search of these studies, and actually come back and report to us and tell us what they think. I think what Commissioner Ziffer says about the time, the speed limit is very, that's a really good point, and that's something that we should consider. But as far as taking people's property, I want all of you to, to think about whether you think it's good for your business for a prospective person who's going to move here, or a person who wants to shop here, or a person who's thinking about locating their business here, to come in here and see all of these signs all over town. Now, do you think that gives somebody a good impression of our town? So somewhere in the, in here, we're going to have to come, that is the, that's what has motivated us to come to this point and try to do something about this, because we do want to present a good face to the world. We also respect the property owner's investment, and as long as that property has been, and that's why we decided that if the property is in, is actively being marketed, or there are some plans to do something differently to it, that's why we took the approach we did about the abandonment. But what you see before you is pretty much a, a result of a lot of conversation and trying to balance all the interests. But I do want you to please give some thought to that, to what I said about the, the impression that these things are giving to our, to our visitors to Tallahassee.
Commissioner Musson?
One of the benefits of not running for office again is that I think this will be the last time I ever have to deal with sign or billboard issues.[710.13][710.13](laughter) I, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the ordinance with a couple of changes. I, I, I'm sorry.
Could I stop you right there? Mr. Cook advises that there was one other speaker slip that we did not call.
Okay.
The gentleman wishes to speak. If we could take him, and then.
Who is that?
Barry Brooks.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Had submitted a speaker form, but I didn't have the agenda item number and didn't realize it was on this item.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Commissioners, I'll be very brief. I'm Barry Brooks, 3214 Salinger Way. I'm chief deputy tax collector for Leon County. Doris Malloy sends her greetings. I told her I was going to come out and monitor this discussion on the signs, because I want to share with you as a fellow governmental entity, part of our communication plan that we came up with was we actually have these digital boards at our service center locations. So while we may not be advertising family-friendly barbecue sandwiches, and I don't think anybody would ever accuse the Tax Collector's Office of being family-friendly, we do advertise certain dates that are important to the citizens in this community. And just as some of your sign folks have been reporting, we were faced with the issue of the three minutes, you know, limitation as well. But I can tell you, we have that same issue with the rotating message. You know, we have to be able to rotate our message to be able to share, you know, the deadlines to pay your taxes, registration requirements, new driver's license requirements. And I will tell you that we have found that these have been a very useful instrument for us to share that public information. And I kind of look at our signs, when we were talking about this, similar to DOT, City of Tallahassee, the state emergency management, when they roll out their boards into the street, you know, to give you some information. So ours are just permanently attached, but they are sharing valuable information to the community. So Commissioners, I encourage you to, to listen to what some of the folks in the audience have said tonight. This has been a great, Ms. Miller, this has been an awesome change from what I first saw when we decided to get these boards. I mean, this has been a great work product, and the Tax Collector will comply with whatever you all come up with, and we just look forward to being a good member of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to quickly point out that Barry Brooks is also a resident of Southwood and lives on Salinger Way, which is one of the roads that we fixed.[868.13][868.13](laughter) Super, C D supervisor.
Okay, let's continue. Commissioner?
Back to my motion.
I'm sorry.
I, I would like to move the ordinance with a couple of amendments. On the time limit deal, I mean, and it, I think it was accurately portrayed, it started at like, you know, 60 seconds, planning commission went 24 hours. We kind of said, well, nah, that's, you know, so we came up with eight seconds, but it was relatively arbitrary. I'd suggest we move that to six seconds and be on the same as billboards. We can look at that later, but I think, I mean, I just don't know, and whoever said hold your breath for eight seconds is right. I mean, that's, you know, it's a lot longer time than you think. So that would be one. The other, on the structures, I'm less bothered by this than some, but I, I would suggest maybe we take that piece of it out and look at that a little more. I would suggest we leave in, though, if you demolish the site, you got to take the structure down. So, so if, with those two changes, I'll move this.
Commissioner?
I'll second the motion. Like Commissioner Musson, signs are probably the least favorite thing to deal with on this commission. And our committee dealt with the billboards the last time we had this, the sign ordinance. I've always felt uncomfortable in the regulating of these things, because they, quite frankly, they just don't bother me the way that I know that it bothers a lot of other people. But, you know, the truth is, is the public roads are public right-of-way. But what you see from the public roads are signs, and for some people, it's an annoyance, it's litter for them in the community. For other people, it's incredibly helpful, and the truth is, is that these folks would not invest 25-plus thousand dollars in these things if they didn't work, which means that the consumers, the customers, the taxpayers who are out there are looking at these things, and they're responding to them, and they're responding to them, at least for these businesses in a positive and affirmative way. And it must be working for us, because we use them as well here within this government, as is the sheriff. We've heard from the Tax Collector's Office, they also use them. Lots of reasons why we ought to figure out good ways around regulating them, and I think that's for safety concerns. And I do think there's an aesthetic piece of this that we have to pay attention to, because it is all of ours quality of life. And, and I don't think anybody's, you know, rivaling to be the next Vegas here. I like Vegas, but it, it is what it is. I don't want it every day. So I get the reason why we're sort of at this juncture. I'm in 100% agreement with removing the piece on demolishing the signs. I think it's, it's a waste of everybody's money, and it certainly is a waste of our time if, if, if we do that. If the structure comes down, I consider it a part of the structure, and that completely makes sense to me, but other than that, I, I don't, I don't get the regulation on it. It would be helpful, I'm fine with the six seconds, but it would be helpful to have something that was more informed by some safety evaluation, to arbitrarily just say, we pulled this number down because it sounded okay, and it was certainly better than 24 hours. You know, I think we owe it to ourselves to have a, a different set of information to guide that choice, but for the time being, I'm okay with it while we look at this, I think, over a six-month or 12-month period to see if, if it's meeting our expectations. I still would love an answer on the, the bus depose. The last thing I want to see happen is us disproportionately, disproportionately place these in certain parts of the city. So if, if you, if you got a response, I'd love to hear it.
On which?
This is on the shelter signage, bus shelter signage. And I did second.
And I, following, I've got a couple of questions on the bus shelters, too, I neglected to ask.
As I understand the question, or if there's any further follow-up, right now, we only have five possible, and more than likely, it could be less than that, or the vendor may back out altogether, locations. All of those locations are kind of more along the peripheral of the city, one being on the, on North Monroe near Tallahassee Mall, the other being on West Tennessee, west of Ocala, another one being on West Pensacola near TCC. The basis for these locations was based on the policy 800, the ridership requirement, and a minimum number of boardings. From the vendor's perspective, they're interested in the number of vehicles that pass by that location. We don't want to put up shelters where, you know, one person boards a week or a day. Obviously, that's a waste of infrastructure and would cause a glut, and we would absolutely have, you know, more than what's needed. This, this market right now doesn't seem to draw the interest for a large number of these types of shelters. And that's my understanding of the question.
Okay. I, I mean, if your answer is it's driven by boarding numbers at stops, that does concern me, because people who ride the bus disproportionately are in certain segments of the city. So, you know, if you're talking about five locations, I would like to restrict, encode the 20, I guess the 30 that we're, that we're allowing. Is it 30? 30 total?
The vendor has had initially agreed to 30 shelters. I think there's two parts to the question here. The first part is the, the geographical locations that we've identified as allowable areas for shelters with advertising to be located. What Ron just spoke to was essentially the additional criteria that we as Star Mitchell are placing on, then those shelters, and then what the contractor is saying that he would see as possible locations based on a business case.
Yeah, well, who gets to choose where they go?
The, the zoning in the ordinance, and Linda would have to answer this specifically, pretty much restricts, you know, where these shelters can be, and it's on a map and, and the green areas.
That's right.
I can't speak to that specifically here.
Okay. Well, I don't want to add this to ordinance, but before we move forward with the bus signs, I think an item should be brought back to the commission for us to respond to.
Do you want to include that in your motion and, Mr.?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just want to be very clear. What's the absolute number of bus shelters that will have advertising?
Don't know.
Today?
No, no, no. I mean, what we're approving today, what's the absolute total number are we approving that conceivably have advertising on them?
All of them.
Is there a number in the ordinance?
All of them.
Even the existing ones that we already have out there could have advertising on them?
No.
Okay. So in other words, the 30 or 35 new $15,000 shelters, those are the only ones that will have advertising on them?
If you recall, several months back, when we first brought a vendor contract related to advertising on bus shelters, at that time, it was proposed that it was going to be 30 shelters. So that's where that 30 number came in. If you look at the ordinance and the, and associated map, it identifies the locations where the staff working with the planning commission had identified locations where those shelters, any shelter could go with advertising on it. We put the additional criteria that we would only allow advertising to go on aesthetically pleasing shelters as approved by the city manager. So that's the design that you see forward in front of you.
So was that?
There is no, there is no cap on the amount of shelters, because it would be dependent on the location. And we could do the further analysis to look at those geographical locations and say, based on those geographical locations and the shelter spots, the star stops that we have, we could, we could reach that number.
I would prefer at this point, even though you're only talking about conceivably five at this point, but at this point, I'd, I'd like to, for us to put a cap, and then if we ever get to that number and they want more, come back. But I, I'd hate to, you know, in two years from now, I have 200 shelters out there with advertising all over them, because I'm not particularly thrilled about that. 35, 30 to 35, I was okay with. The other thing is, how long, I mean, so in perpetuity, these shelters, as long as they're maintained, they get to continue to put their advertising on. There's no timeframe?
Not necessarily.
It's a contract.
Typically, you have a contract, and the contract's negotiated, and it's either, usually either 10 years or 15 years. At that point, the shelter is then owned by the city.
Okay.
And we can determine whether or not we want to continue advertising. If we did so, we would get 100% of the advertising revenue if we continued.
So do we know what that time period is at this juncture?
We do not have the contract negotiated, because the ordinance has not yet been passed.
Okay.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Well.
I'd still, I don't know if anybody else agrees on the number, but.
Well, that's going to be brought back to us anyway.
Okay.
Because that's what Commissioner, Ms. Commissioner Gillum wanted to do, so we can, we can study that. This is, this ordinance is a sign of the times.
No pun intended.
No pun intended. But it is. It certainly is. Advertising is changing. I mean, five years ago, we didn't have any kind of electronic boards, or even less, less few years than that, and things are changing all over. And this has been, this is, looks like a much more efficient and effective way for our businesses to, to advertise, and that's what's happening here. And there are a lot of moving parts to this particular ordinance. That's what got me a little bit. So I'm very happy that you all have pulled out certain parts of this, so we can look at it individually. I think that's appropriate. I quite frankly was thinking about maybe we need to look at each part individually so we could really understand what's going on, and I'm sure that you've done that, but I, I think what we have decided at this point is appropriate, that we look at these parts and let's move forward with this, and with Commissioner Musson, when, but he won't see a lot of, unfortunately, Commissioner Musson, you're going to see some more of this before you leave, I suspect. But, and I think we should do that. I have to tell you that I, at one point in time, I talked to Mr. Colleen. He came by my office, and he showed me what this could do, and I was kind of thinking, you know, he has a point. When you see all these on one road and see all these signs flashing and everything, it's going to create a problem. But then I got to the point, after hearing tonight, quite honestly, what had to be said, especially with regards to safety. I think I'm convinced that this is not a safety issue, based on the information that we have received thus far. So it gets down to whether or not, in my opinion, it's aesthetics versus jobs issue, aesthetics versus jobs. And right now, considering the current economy, I got to go for the jobs under, under these circumstances. I mean, I realize that aesthetically, we may look at this thing and say, oh, wow, it doesn't look good on Capital Circle, but I'm, I'm, I prefer at this point in time, maybe we can look at the job issue at some point in the future, I mean, the aesthetic issue sometime in the future, but right now, I've been talking about local jobs and local businesses and that kind of thing. I said, I want to see our businesses thrive. So that's where I am at this point in time, and I will agree with the motion that's presented by Commissioner Musson and amended by Commissioner Gillum, that we do it that way. We got a motion in a second, do we not? All in favor of the motion, say.
Wait, I'm not sure exactly what we are voting on.
Motion is to adopt the ordinance with certain pieces pulled out.
Yes.
One of the pieces is the bus piece, the abandonment piece, and there was another piece that was.
You changed the seconds from eight to six.
And change it to six seconds.
Correct.
Did Commissioner, Commissioner Gillum, did you want the bus shelter pulled out completely?
No, I, no, what I asked for is that before we move forward with allowing any of them, that, that come back to the commission for approval.
Oh, okay, I see. So we're not really pulling, we're, we'll see it, okay?
I thought on the part about abandoned signs, if the, if the building was torn down, we were leaving the piece, where the building was torn down, the sign comes down, but if it's, okay.
We're deleting the abandoned.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, all right. I think we.
We're taking out the 24-month period. If the building is demolished, then the sign should be demolished also.
Okay.
We're leaving that in.
All right. You're going to revamp this, come back. I don't know if we have, do we have to bring it back?
No, sir.
All right, good.
We've got it.
Then Commissioner Musson, you're off the hook at this point.
And I'd like to announce, I hope this is the last time I have to deal with this.
Well, what about you?
Me, too.
Okay. We got a motion in a second. I think we understand the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Thank you all for bringing this information to us. Okay, thank you very much. Next.
Next item, your last public hearing, item 23, is public hearing on resolution number 12 R-03.
Wait, hold on, hold on, Jim. What's that, folks?
Nothing.
We're, we're just waiting for you all to, to leave so we can get to the next one.
Or you can stay.
Oh, you can stay. As a matter of fact, you should. He will.[1734.13][1734.13](laughter)
But I've seen them in other cities.
Okay, next item.
Item 23, public hearing on resolution 12 R-03. It initiates a special assessment process for the West End Village Urban Plan Unit Development and approval of filing of the caveat. Mayor Commissioners, you conceptually approved this process at the January 11th meeting. This is the follow-up to formally adopt the special assessment resolution that initiates the process and files the caveat in the public records and approves the appropriation from the general fund, and it is here for public hearing as required. There are no speakers.
No speakers. We...
The item, Mayor.
Second. Properly moved in second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
All right.
It passes unanimously. Next?
Mr. Mayor, one additional item. Commissioner Musson indicated to me at the break that we needed to bring back item 12, which was the Sally property sale approval for, because he has a potential conflict and wanted to announce that and allow a revote on that so he could abstain.
Yeah, I, if I could, I've disclosed this before, that I have some business relationships with Will Butler, and I don't know what role that he has in that transaction, but given that he was here with them, I assume he has some. So in an abundance of caution, I'd like to redo that vote and abstain from it.
Move to reconsider item 12.
Properly moved in second. We're going, under review, if that passes, we're under review. Can I have a motion on that item?
Move approval?
Move approval. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
With Commissioner Musson abstaining. It passes for the floor. All right. Next?
Mr. Mayor, we're under unengaged speakers.
Do we have any?
We do have two speakers, Mayor.
All righty.
First is Dr. Erwin Jackson, and the second will be Curtis Baines.
Now, this is actually why I came here tonight. Erwin Jackson, 1341 Jackson Bluff. Two weeks ago, I came to this commission, this commission, and I told, stated that lawyers John Marks, Sean Pittman, Mark Heron, and the Leon County Democratic Executive Committee acted willfully and with reckless disregard of the election laws of our state. Specifically, the documents I shared with you, I believe, show that they lied and they cheated in order to steal the mayor's election. John Marks and his usual suspects believed that winning at any price was acceptable, including the violation of our election laws. This was not a minor mistake, but a concerted plan to launder money, to hide its origin, and to hide how it was being used. In contrast, Mr. Mayor, your opponent in last year's race is a good and decent man who wanted to win badly, but unlike you, he would only accept victory if it resulted from a fair and honest campaign. Today, in the newspaper, again, front page, ethics attorney, Mark Heron admitted his role in these illegal acts. The L C D E C have also agreed their actions were illegal. Mr. Mayor, are you willing now to accept your responsibility for coordinating this entire illegal mess? And before you answer, let me tell you that I know of two individuals who will testify that you were a key figure in the beginning and the coordination of all these illegal elections. Monday night, in this very room, a member of the L C D E C dared to question why his Democratic Party acted illegally when they paid John Marks's campaign bills. The cover-up then begins. Leaders of the Democratic Party refused to answer his questions and demanded that he sit down and keep quiet. Bob Henderson, the treasurer of L C D E C, and the person responsible for signing the checks and agreeing to pay these payments to the mayor's expenses, went ahead and charged at the questioner, attempted to force his compliance physically, and police were called. It is now well documented that any person who questions the illegal actions of this mayor may be assaulted, even in public. This mayor and his usual suspects will threaten, intimidate, and even use violence to desperately retain their hold on city power. Commissioners, our mayor is no more than a thug in a suit, who remain, who retains power through inside deals, secret payoffs, intimidation, stealing elections, and even assault and battery. Commissioners, join with me in asking for the immediate resignation of John Marks, and also freeze any contracts that this government has with Sean Pittman or Mark Heron until all these legal actions are taken care of. Thank you so much for your time.
Next speaker?
Next speaker is Curtis Baines.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner is Curtis Baines, 1323 East Tennessee Street. I wanted to thank you and congratulate you on your efforts earlier, on your reimbursement recovery of costs with, dealing with ethics complaints and civil complaints. I was also, I've never heard anyone say that, that city employees or officials or even elected officials should have to bear the cost of unfounded ethics complaints or any other kind of action taken against them when they're acting in the good faith discharge of their duties in their capacity with the city. So I don't think that's ever been an issue. But I was a little bit concerned. I'm glad I didn't hear it again earlier when you were having the discussions on the, on the policy questions, but I was a little bit concerned when I heard it, two weeks, I guess it was two weeks ago, about the unnecessary, the rhetoric that is, serves in effect to institutionalize the antagonism toward ethics complaints. I know that, I know they can be a source of anxiety and uncertainty, some frustration. I understand they are, they can be time-consuming and they require resources to resolve. And you're right, it is the taxpayers' money. It may be too much to ask you to embrace these, these things, but, you know, in the future, you might want to think of, of ethics complaints and other civil matters and criminal matters, for that matter, as just another accountability tool. And I understand, I understand the anxiety that might be, but, but these are necessary accountability, accountability tools. And if, I think the, the number that was bandied around last time was $3,000 down the, down the block last night. They were talking about when it was $56,000. But whatever the, whatever the cost of those things, it's just another cost of accountability, in my view. And if three or $5,000 or whatever it is, is that big an issue, yeah, I'll be happy to sit down with anyone, spend 15 minutes going through your 900 million dollar budget and finding $3,000 for you. Thank you very much for your time.
Next speaker?
Next speaker is Larry Hendricks, and unless someone else brings a speaker for him, he'll be the final speaker.
Mr. Hendricks?
I was thinking there was an overhead projector here, but there's not. I just emailed y'all, all, basically emailed that concerns the cost of community services And I'll just read from this. So this is in the public record. The term "cost of community services," C O C S, usually refers to a growing body of literature which focuses upon how various types of land use affect local government taxation and spending. This body of literature generally summarizes studies that use fiscal impact analysis as their primary method of determining whether various forms of land use contribute to or detract from local government budgets. One of the most common procedures used is the calculation of C O C S ratio for each land use category. The ratio compares how many dollars worth of local government services are demanded per dollar collected. A ratio greater than one percent, where do we go here? Excuse me. Greater than one suggests that for every dollar of revenue collected from a given category of land, more than $1 is spent in association with it. Virtually all studies show that for residential land, the C O C S ratio is substantially above one. That is, residential land is a net drain on local government budgets. The average estimate ranges from about 1.15 to $1.50, which means that for every dollar collected in taxes and non-tax revenues, between $1.15 and $1.50 gets returned in the form of services by the local government and school district. What it means is that residential land development, which seems to be something that's pushed and subsidized in this community to a large amount of money, costs the taxpayers and the citizens and the children and the seniors and everybody in this community. It's not a benefit. It doesn't broaden the tax base. It does not bring revenues into the coffers of the city of Tallahassee. It costs. The last study was done in Leon County in 2002. It found out that that cost was $1.38 per every dollar that was taken in the form of taxes and fees, meaning that a 38 cents per dollar deficit. That is what's happened to our budget. That's why you're not able to deliver the same services we received in this community as citizens 10 years ago. And that's why there's always the talk of taxes being raised. The taxes are either being raised or the services are being cut. And I beg please anybody to dispute that with facts and figures. I know it's not to be the case. You have governed us into the hole, and we're quite frankly tired of it.
Excuse me, your time's expired.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Jackson, before you leave, I, I usually would not beckon to say anything about this, but I have to tell you that I am highly offended by your calling the mayor a thug. You have every right to say what it is that you want to say at the microphone. Obviously, you have your First Amendment rights. You also have the ability to lay whatever claims that you want to lay out there. And I would encourage you, if they are of a legal nature or an ethical nature, that you go through the proper course. But to denigrate an individual, not off of any, you're a smart man and you got an extensive vocabulary, and I think you probably could find any other terminology that you want to use, but the, the, John, I'm, knowing, knowing, knowing where you grew up and your age, you probably have heard a lot, terminology a lot more offensive. But I just want to beg upon you that in the future, when you come to the podium, feel free to make whatever claims that you want to, but if you could avoid personal attacks of a nature as insulting, as referring to anyone up here, but certainly the mayor of the city as a thug in a suit, I would hope that you would think again about that before doing it. And that's, that's all I want to say.
I am, I'm desperately holding back.
Well, I think you should adjourn.
And I will. I will.
We can do it, Jim.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, that completes the city's business tonight.
Something I forgot to do earlier. I want to thank, I know there were a lot of people involved in the last 24 to 48 hours, but our director of growth management, Karen Jamminville, and assistant city manager, Jay Townsend, they probably went through a couple pair of shoes over the last two days, going back and forth between various offices, working out and working through and coming up with ideas and creating...
Thank you.
The solution that we reached earlier, quite frankly, is nothing more than astounding. Because I think 24 hours ago, most of us didn't think we would get here, and we did because of your efforts and your staff's efforts, and you should be commended for that. So I want to personally say thank you.
Commissioner Ziffer, just to ditto that, on the sign ordinance as well, I mean, the masterful way in which, I mean, it literally is the worst thing we ever have to talk about up here, is between that and slopes, I could, I could, you know, care less. But the way the staff managed that, city attorney, Ms. Hudson, really, really appreciate your flexibility with it.
Well, Ms. Hudson has done all the work, and this has been going on for, what, three years, four years? And I, you, Commissioners, you did a very good job tonight with that, with a difficult issue.
I know that we always record our meetings. I want to make sure, especially, that we recorded this one. We stand adjourned.